Call to order. Welcome, everyone. Good evening. We have a quorum. Could we have the roll call, please, Weston?
Yes, Mayor. Mayor Styx.
Here.
Mayor Protam Francina.
I'm here.
Councilmember Rule.
Here.
Councilmember Lang.
Here.
Councilmember Whitman.
Here.
Thank you, Weston. And welcome, everyone, to the June 27, 2023, meeting of the Ojai City Council. Weston, will you please say the pledge for us?
Yes, Mayor.
Thank you.
Please stand. Right hand over your hearts. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Weston. Approval of the agenda? Motion to approve?
Before we approve the agenda, I want to make a request. I'm going to make the same recommendation, the same request tonight that I made when we spoke on the phone early Thursday morning. I respectfully ask you to postpone the discussion to remove Planning Commissioner Jeffrey Starkweather from the Planning Commission until he can be present in person. And your response was that he can speak on Zoom. It is 2:00 a.m. right now in Ireland and in England, where he and his wife Dee Reed are on vacation. I also pointed out that this is our city manager's last meeting, and I hope that this last meeting could be a peaceful and productive one. And furthermore, we have not received any complaints from the Planning Commission. This is not an emergency item, but, as we can see from our wonderful audience, it is an item of great interest to the public because of what it represents. This item represents the politicization of the commissions. That is what is the underlying issue that I feel this item represents. So I'm also predicting that it could be close to, you know, after 11 o'clock before we get to this, and it just feels just more kind and right to postpone this item. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Protam Francina. And I definitely appreciate your comments and appreciate your call. And I hear you on those two points. As I said when we spoke, yes, you can Zoom, you can send an email, you can write public comment. You, you know, and as we know, this, in the 21st century, that's always a possibility. Of course, you know, I don't know people's vacation schedules. And when Councilmember Rule and Councilmember Lang could not attend in person, they Zoomed. So that's always the option. The other thing is, you know, as we, as most of us know, an email came out circulated maybe 10 days ago online, and I received so many comments, be it different, you know, email, phone call. And there were a lot of comments online for residents to deal with this swiftly and clearly. And my reasoning is that we have incredible city staff. They're just really amazing people. They work so hard to keep our city running smoothly. And I think it's really important, and it's a really important aspect of our jobs as councilmembers, to make sure that the city runs, you know, in a positive way.
Excuse.
And I'm going to finish my sentence, please, and I'm going to finish my statement, and you may have your turn when I'm finished.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Oh, okay. I'll get closer. So I think it's really important that we deal with it now. And there's another Planning Commission on the 19th meeting, and I think we should do, we all need to do it now and not later. And this is a matter of, once again, policy, the role of commissioners in our city, how they help the council, how they interact with staff, how they interact with us. And I think the huge number of emails that were sent from Commissioner Starkweather to our staff indicates that it's not a good fit. So back to harmony and peace, in order to have a peaceful and harm, and I'm going to ask the audience to ref, excuse me, excuse me, I'm going to ask the audience to remain silent and be respectful when someone's speaking. And when it's your turn to speak, we will do our best to do the same. Oh, okay, okay. Thank you very much. I appreciate that. So, once again, I, I put it on the agenda for the council to, to look at. And I think it's really important that we do it now and not in two weeks. And back to, yes, we love James. We are all sad that James is leaving. We want the best for James. I'm excited and sad at the same time for him. We have a new interim city manager starting on the 17th. And I would like him to come in to, to an environment that is healthy and harmonious, where we work together and we all respect each other regardless of our opinions. So I'm going to, I would like to keep it on the agenda. And I'd also make a, make a motion, because there are so many speakers, we have a big pile right here for item number six, I would like to move it up to item number four. Item number two, agenda item number two and three are time sensitive and will probably go quickly. So I'd like to make a motion to move it to number four.
I'll second.
I'm going to make a sec, if I could.
Yep.
Substitute motion. Susan, did you make a motion?
Yes, I made a motion to withdraw the item from the agenda. I will not approve the agenda with this item on the agenda.
So we didn't, where are we in, are we looking for a second on that, or do we need a substitute motion for that?
If Susan made the first motion and I made the second motion, we'll vote on the second motion first.
Well, I'd make a third motion then. I mean, we, her never, hers never got seconded.
Yeah, it wasn't clear that the mayor, Protam Francina, that you made a motion, but clearly you made a motion that needs a second. That's a second, that's the first motion. The mayor's motion will be the second motion. There can be up to three motions on the table, so a third motion could be made.
Okay, is there a second for Mayor Protam Francina's motion?
Of course, yes. And I would like to also speak on the item.
Yeah, and I want to respond. I didn't, I didn't mean that we were going to get into it so deeply, but since we had, I think we all need the opportunity to respond.
So is there a second to my motion?
I would.
Yeah, I, I did second your motion.
Oh, okay.
All righty.
Thank you, councilmember. Okay, Councilmember Rule?
My comment was just simply that the motion wasn't, that we shouldn't be entering into discussion about the reasoning behind this. But if we are going to enter into the discussion about the reasoning behind this, then.
This is not the time.
No, it's not.
But you did already start that conversation.
Excuse me.
You have perpetuated a rumor.
Excuse me, excuse me. We are talking about whether to keep it on the agenda or not. So please keep your voice down, Mayor Protam.
But you didn't do that.
I was responding to the comment that you made.
Okay, so here's.
We have a motion, we have a motion, we have a substitute or secondary motion with a, with a second. So let's go ahead and vote on that.
No, excuse me.
We need to discuss.
Just one at a time, please.
We need to discuss this. It's a motion on the table. It's open for discussion.
And just remember, let's just, okay, and, and just remember, the discussion is about whether to do it tonight or to delay it, which is what you brought up. Is that accurate?
Yes, but you went into why you think it should stay on the agenda without giving me the opportunity to state why I think it should be removed.
Mayor Protam, you asked me why, and I explained. So let's have a round, one round of comments, then we'll vote on the motion. Councilmember Lang?
So I have thought about this nonstop for the last four days, or, you know, honestly, I've gotten sick over it. And, and one of the reasons why I've made a decision to keep it on the agenda for tonight, and I agree with moving it up, one of the reasons why is because this is, because this is James's last night, this is the only opportunity we'll have to hear his perspective on the matter. And because some of the comments that were in the mayor's note involve him, I think I would like to hear his, his perspective. The other thing is that having this on the agenda has been really, you know, divisive for the whole community in a lot of ways. And, and do we want to wait two more weeks for that? I mean, I've spent hours and hours on the phone and responding to emails about this subject, and I, I don't, I don't think it's good to, to continue it. And I was not aware that he was out of the country until just a couple of days ago. So I, I, I think it's all unfortunate.
Can we have a roll call, or you want?
Well, you know, you have repeated this accusation in this email, this private email that was sent out to Heidi Whitman. She showed it to me at the end of her driveway. I was aware of it. You, you have used the words weak young female opponents to characterize Commissioner Starkweather as a misogynist.
Mayor Protam, this is not the discussion we're having. The discussion will be on item number six. So could we have the roll call, please?
I have not had an opportunity.
You used those words in your statement.
Mayor Protam, this is about the approval of the agenda, the order in which we will do it. That's what we're discussing. Is this about the order of the agenda?
This is about the item on the agenda and why I think that I am, I'm speaking to Councilmember Francina's motion. And I'm speaking to this is that this was put on at the last minute. This was put on Wednesday or early Thursday morning, Wednesday night, and no one knew until we got the agenda. The public didn't know. There was no second to put it on. There was no information put out. It seems to me that it is a unilateral decision by the mayor that has been incredibly divisive. And for that reason, I think that we should wait another two weeks. There have been comments that have come in disparaging Commissioner Starkweather that I would like to respond to for those who, who did. That is why I think that we should postpone it for two weeks and give an opportunity to really delve into this.
Okay, thank you. All right, let's go ahead and have the roll call, Weston.
Yes.
It's a, it's a vote of the council majority to see what we're going to do. Go ahead, Weston.
Roll call on the substitute motion by Mayor Styx, second by Councilmember Whitman to move item six to item, to move item six to number four. Councilmember Whitman?
Yes.
Mayor Protam Francina?
No.
Councilmember Lang?
Yes.
Mayor Styx?
Yes.
Councilmember Rule?
No.
Okay, let's, thank you. The agenda's approved. Let's move on to presentation. We have a presentation from Help of Ojai regarding services provided by the organization. And we are so grateful and happy to have you here, Jane and Megan, and grateful for all that you do to our community, for our community. Thank you.
Hi, you guys. Good evening. I'm Jane Walter. I am one of the co-executive directors at Help of Ojai. And I am so thankful that you guys invited us to speak here tonight. I'm going to kind of go over broadly our services. Some of you guys already know this, hopefully, but hopefully you'll learn some new things about us as well. And I'm thankful that there's so many people here tonight to hear about Help of Ojai. So again, I'm Jane Walter. Megan Telfer is the other co-executive director, and we transitioned into these roles in late 2021. Next slide, please. Help of Ojai was founded in the late 1960s, so we are almost at our 50-year anniversary. We were incorporated in 1974. So we have been doing this work for a little over 50 years, but formally almost at our 50-year anniversary. And we aim to meet the basic needs of Ojai Valley residents. We run six main programs and within them have several pieces, but our priority is to help and reach senior citizens, low-income families with minor children, and unhoused individuals. We emphasize sustainable housing support, healthy food and health care for those we assist. And we strive to provide programs and services that improve the quality of life for our clients and to create community dialogue around emerging issues so that we can intervene and support them. So again, we manage six programs. I will touch briefly on all of them. I encourage you guys, if you have questions for me, to chime in. So next slide, please. So first program, and again, we've been doing this since the 70s, you guys, our senior activity program, which takes place at our Montgomery Street location. So for that, that is where we host things like Tai Chi, guitar, we have speaker series, different courses that we offer, teaching opportunities. The objective being that we are offering a space to older adults where they can connect and integrate within their community and, you know, build relationships with both our organization and one another. Next slide, please. Many of you hopefully or likely recognize these vans that zip around town Monday through Friday from 8:30 to 3:30. So this is our transportation program. We offer door-to-door service for adults over the age of 60. So we pick them up from their home or whatever location that they might be at, whether it's a doctor's office or perhaps a salon, variety of things within the Ojai Valley that we will drive you to and from. And there is, this is all volunteer-driven. So we have one staff member who leads this program, but all of those drivers are volunteers, and we are so grateful for that, their time and support with this program. And this, again, great opportunity and great service for those who maybe don't have a vehicle or who are no longer able to drive. And we can accommodate folks who are in wheelchairs or use walkers who might, or who might need a personal aide with them. Next slide, please. Our senior nutrition program takes place at our Baldwin location, so the old honor farm. So at that location, we prepare 100-plus meals Monday through Friday that are then delivered, once again, by volunteers. So those volunteers deliver meals to our homebound community members who are unable to leave their home to access fresh food or cooked food for that matter. And then at the same site, we also offer our congregate lunch program. So those who can are able to come and have a meal with their friends or maybe new friends. And it's great food cooked by our staff, and that is Monday through Friday. Next slide, please. We have our Second Helpings Donation Center and Thrift Store. I think probably a lot of you are familiar with us there, and that is Ladybug, our featured superstar of Second Helpings. So all the donations that we receive at our Baldwin site are sorted and then sent to our thrift store. And those sales and all of that support that we receive support all of our programs. So it's a really, really important piece of what we do at Help of Ojai. And then next slide, please. Finally, and I'll spend a little bit more time talking about this, but we have our Community Assistance Program. So this is one of our largest programs. This is the CAP Office, as we call it. This houses all of our low-income services, so including our food pantry and case management services. We support housing and food insecure households by providing them with pantry boxes, fresh food two days a week. We can help individuals apply for utility assistance. We have grants for medical costs, for car repair, so various services available. We also, I think really important to highlight with case management, for folks who receive things like Medi-Cal, CalFresh or food stamps, or who are on housing, there is a ton of paperwork that correlates with all of those programs. And case managers can sit with someone and ensure that they're doing everything correctly or in a timely manner so that they don't lose their benefits or services. And that's a really important piece of what they do that I think a lot of people would benefit from. Last month, our pantry supported 400 individuals. So that's 400 individuals who access the pantry several times per week. So we're seeing those people quite often, not just one time per month. There has been this conversation we've heard where we're a soup kitchen, and I just want to clarify that we indeed are not. We distribute groceries. And so that is a, for anyone who is dealing with food insecurity, please, we encourage and welcome them to come to our space on Montgomery Street for services. We are members of the Ventura County Continuum of Care, and we practice a housing-first model with any of our unhoused clients. We have two full-time case managers, one who specializes in supporting older adults, and then the other is our Director of Homeless Services. Next slide, please. So going back to that original point about our mission and that we are sort of always assessing, back one, please, assessing community need, we have seen the significant increase in the number of our clients who are housing insecure, meaning their rent is significantly more than 50% of their income, they're potentially living in substandard housing, they might be living with multiple families in one home. And we've seen a big increase in that in addition to our community who are literally unhoused. Last year, we saw an almost 16% increase in the number of unhoused in Ojai. So with that, I want to highlight two programs. There should be another slide after this one. Thank you. Our homeless prevention program and our Housing Assistance Fund. So for us, the easiest way to address homelessness prevention, and to clarify, none of it is easy, but it is to keep people housed in the homes that they are in. So when we work with a family or individual who had some maybe type of hardship, and they are unable to pay their rent, which might lead to an eviction, our hope is that either Help of Ojai or one of our partner agencies can intervene, support that family, and keep them housed. We know, our data shows, it is what we are living day to day, that when someone becomes unhoused in Ojai, they cannot replicate their housing. They will become homeless and/or leave the Ojai Valley. So for us, it is so important to intervene when we can, when people are housed, and that often is through rental assistance. If we have the funding, we absolutely support households. At a time like right now, when we don't have a specific rental assistance fund, we make referrals to agencies within the county. So we support that household in applying for that funding and as far through the process as we can with the hope that another agency in the county can give them the financial assistance. And again, this all goes back to us being a part of the Continuum of Care, having a close relationship with our partner agencies and of, that being of the utmost importance. And then second, I just want to highlight and share information about our Housing Assistance Fund, the Incliment Weather Program specifically. I think we all experienced this last year of that, like, very, very intense heat that came super late in the summer or early fall, as well as all of the rain that we had in the winter. And so for us, this program's super important because we are able to support any of our clients who are living on the street during those times and get them into hotels and to safe shelter. So that is a very important program for us because we know the heat and the rain and this very erratic weather probably isn't going anywhere, and that these services are super important. And again, this just kind of came into fruition as a full-on program this last year. We, I think it was 27 households, or we, we assisted people 27 nights in a hotel. And, and just one thing that I think is important to mention, knowing kind of with this mindset of Help of Ojai has been doing this work forever, right? And so for us, one of the big challenges or changes is that when I came onto the org six years ago and I did our rental assistant program, you know, our budget was like $2,000 a month. So that's not even fair market value for a one-bedroom anymore. So with all of this and the need to support community members comes this very important increase in the amount of rent, which means we need more money than to pay people's rent, right? And so kind of factoring all of that into these programs and really making note of what existed five years ago is so different from what it is now, and how important it is to have support. And for us, you know, who are always actively seeking out funding for these programs, just have the community know, you know, Help of Ojai, almost 50% of our budget or our, our revenue is through community donations. And so how important it is that people support the work that we do. I will end it there. And if you have more questions about what we do, you can go to the next slide. I have my email address here for anyone who might be watching. We do have a somewhat active Facebook and Instagram page, and then we do publish a newsletter every other month for anyone who can, wants to read that. You can sign up, but it's also published on our website, so you don't have to sign up. But I'm happy to answer any questions you guys might have. Yes.
Thank you so much.
First of all, thank you for participating in the recent homeless and housing panel that the Ojai Valley Democratic.
Yeah, we were happy to be there.
Sponsored. That was excellent. And I really hope that people understand the gravity of what you just said, that once you become unhoused in Ojai, your chances of finding another rental are slim to none. And I can vouch for that, as I've been looking for 19 months. And I have endless documents on people who, who've lived here practically their whole life. They're now in their 80s. They end up in a small trailer on Telegraph Road. This is shameful that this is happening in our community, and it has to somehow, we have to work together. I know Mayor Styx and Rachel and Leslie and I, we're all working on this separately, but we're working together also, which I greatly appreciate.
And I, I think you bring up a really good point that I think maybe we don't discuss enough in this community, which is the aging population of Ojai.
Yes.
Who are on a very fixed income and how it takes one event to make them housing insecure and/or vulnerable in terms of their housing.
Yes.
And I think that is so important and such an important reflection of the Ojai community that we value and love so much, right? Our elders and the older folks who make this community what it is and how we really need to have the infrastructure and support for them.
Yeah. I have one other question, if I may. Can you, because we've discussed it with Matt LeVere, Supervisor LeVere, can you get matching funds from the county? Or is there a way that we can help you obtain those funds?
So I think that the matching funds that I've, so I've heard this sort of circulate and float about. So I think part of it depends on the service, right? We, as members of Continuum of Care, are aware and are notified of services or of funding opportunities we might be eligible for. And I think with that, there's like county funding that's incorporated in that, and so I think that's where that comes from. I don't know that we are offering the exact services that the county would match, right? Because we're not, we don't have housing, right? Help of Ojai doesn't manage housing. So I, I think that there likely is funding in the universe, right? That could maybe very loosely sort of trickle down to Help of Ojai. But I think what they're looking at are much more of those very specific and direct service providers who are doing housing-related work. That's my understanding.
That's, that is also my understanding, but there may be a way.
Yeah.
When we have the opportunity, maybe I can discuss it with Supervisor. Thank you, because you do such great work. Thank you.
Councilmember Rule?
Yeah, I just wanted to check in with you guys. We will, on our pending priorities list, be talking about SB 647, which is basically a California law that allows us to prioritize low-income renters at risk of displacement in affordable housing if it is 100, if it is funded by the state. So I wanted to make you aware of that and make you aware, and potentially, you could be a conduit for people coming in because you have ears, you know, you have ears on the ground. So I will be reaching out to you about that. I think that it's a fabulous opportunity for our at-risk, our at-risk renters, you know, of displacement. So I just wanted to make you aware of that, and then I'll be reaching out to see if we can have some sort of communication around that. So thank you.
Sounds great. Thank you.
Councilmember Lang?
I just really want to thank you for all that you do. You know, I, when you showed me, gave me the tour of the facility and just showed me all the programs that you have, you're meeting a need in the community that nobody else is or nobody else could. And, and, and I know that, that as we talk about community contracts and, and things like that, that there will be consideration. And so I just wanted to let you know that, that I really appreciate all that you do and that you have been.
Mayor, I do have one quick question. Are the hotels that you mentioned, are they in Ojai or Ventura?
So they're in Ojai when they can be. So what happens, and, and one of the challenges with all of the rain, I'll just refer to it as that, is that it happened over a holiday weekend. So many of the hotels here were booked. And we did ask a few folks who we knew had transportation if they would be willing to go to a hotel in Ventura. And so they did. But our hope and our goal with the program is to keep people here, knowing that they might not have transportation, and that it's a lot easier for them and us, because we can transport them, right? And so that's the idea, and that's the hope. But it really comes down to how booked is Ojai when this is happening, which is challenging.
But there are hotels in Ojai willing to work with you.
Absolutely.
That's good to know. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Well, thank you so much, Jane. Thank you, Megan, for being. And can we all just give Help of Ojai a round of applause?
Thank you guys so much.
We are blessed and grateful to have you. Thank you. All right, we will move on to commission reports. We have Pamela Grau, Commissioner Pamela Grau from the Arts Commission. Thank you, Pamela.
Good evening, everyone. Hi. So as part of the Arts Commission and our five-year plan, we're committed to impacting the community, and I've been put in charge of art education. My project this month is art festivals and fairs, how to, I'm going to read it to you because I'm nervous, how to help artists within Ojai look outside of Ojai for opportunities. We have a huge art community here, and we're very limited. There's not a lot of galleries, not a lot of opportunities. So last month, we focused on grants, how to get grants. Thank you, Heidi Whitman. And this month, we have Elaine Unziger, a renowned artist in town who's going to be sharing her expertise about how one does fairs and festivals. We're going to be meeting this Thursday, July 13, from 2:00 to 3:30 at the Ojai Valley Museum. It's free. It's free to the public, so everybody who's watching, please come. And this is, you know, it's really. And this is, you know, it's really tough being an artist. It's tough to make a living. It's tough to get your work out there. So having these supportive seminars, teaching our artists how to think bigger, how to dream bigger, we're really looking forward to doing that. And thank you for the support and trust that you give us as the Art Department, or Art Commission. The next seminar coming up will be in September, and it's on copyright law and estate planning for artists. And the date is still unknown, but that's coming up next. And then, thank you.
Thank you so much, Pamela.
Any questions?
Any question? Thank you for promoting art education and supporting our artists. Much appreciated.
Thank you.
Pamela, hello. So, you know, the thought that always comes to my mind, in addition to needing housing for our artists, without affordable housing for artists, there will not be an art community in Ojai at some point unless it's already a well-established artist, you know, of a certain financial scale. But if we had more housing where they could have in-house galleries, like what Beatrice Wood always had, she always had her home and her gallery in the same place, and maybe you could add that to your vision.
Well, I was going to say, you know, the Ojai, I was president to the Ojai Studio Artists for several years, and in October, we have the three-day tour, which is everybody's studio at home opens up into a gallery. We have three days that are free to the public, and we have second Saturdays.
Yes.
Every second Saturday, there's an area, it's organized by areas. In terms of affordable housing, don't get me started, but you know, I think there's a misunderstanding about, I know that Betsy has talked about, it's a greed problem, not a-
Yes, we don't want to need to get into all that.
No, I know, but the thing is-
I'm just stating that in your vision, do not lose sight of the hard reality that without housing for new, young artists, we're in trouble. That's all I want to say and emphasize. I already know about the figures and all the, you know, the roadblocks, but we can overcome them because that should be part of the vision if Ojai is going to remain an internationally-known art community. We need to keep that.
ADU's help. ADU's help. And the other thing, since I'm up here, the barn that you have that's decaying there on the side of the campus here, I would love to see that turn into a gallery for the city collection. And having worked with grants and city grants and National Endowment of the Arts grants, if we could get some sort of commitment to make it a gallery, I would love to look for funding outside of Ojai to make that happen. So consider that.
Thank you. Thank you, Pamela. All right, we'll move on to public communication. And just a reminder to everyone, these are items not on the agenda, and because they're not on the agenda, we cannot discuss them. We appreciate your viewpoint and participation, and we can agendize in the future, so please resist veering off into one of our agenda items. And at the end of the three minutes, you will hear a chime. Please stop talking, and no giving away of time. And if you're in agreement, you can just say ditto, and let's all please take a deep breath and practice decorum, because while we may disagree, we need to respect everybody. So thank you very much. Okay, so we will begin with the event and organization cards. We have Ron Salarsano from the library, Len Clay from the Ojai Arts Center, and Jill Dolan from the Arts Center.
All right. Thank you so much, members of council. My name is Ron Salarsano. I am the regional librarian for the Ojai Valley, and I'm here to just give you an update on what we have going on at the Ojai Library. So right now, this month, our big focus is summer reading. We have reading challenges running for both kids and grownups this year. Adults who participate can log each book that they read, with each entry giving them a chance to win fun prizes as the program goes on. Kids can log the minutes that they read and can pick up a free prize book at the library when they reach 500 minutes. Logging reading time for kids also enters them into a drawing for a grand prize at the end of the summer, and that prize is going to be a Nintendo Switch. So join the program. Our special summer programming continues every week at the Ojai Library. We're offering pearler crafting on Monday afternoons, Maker Labs on Tuesdays, regular storytimes on Wednesday mornings, Lego playtime on Thursdays, teen sewing workshops on Sundays. And also, our Paws for Reading program, where children can practice their literacy skills by reading to an adorable therapy dog, continues weekly on Wednesdays at 12:30 PM. You can call the library to reserve your spot for that program. We will be concluding our summer festivities with a special rocket launch activity on Thursday, August 3rd, that's going to be at 10:00 AM, and we will have an end-of-summer party featuring Kona Ice on Friday, August 4th, at 2:00 PM. If you have any questions or would like additional information on these programs, you can contact the library. All of this programming is in addition to our usual offerings, which include our ukulele club on Monday mornings, the Shakespeare Salon on the first and third Monday evenings of the month, our climate action book group on the second and fourth Monday afternoons, and the Ojai Poetry Series that meets on the third Tuesday evening of every month. This month, we also have two new take-home activity kits that are available. One is a kaleidoscope crafting kit for children, and the other is a paper art globe crafting kit for adults. You can stop by the library to pick up one or both of these. And that's all I have for the evening, so thank you so much for your time, and have a wonderful night.
Thank you, Ron. Fantastic. Much appreciated. Next, we have Len Clay, then Jill Dolan, then Randy Haney.
Good evening, Leonard Clay. I live in the city of Ojai. I am speaking at this occasion as member of the Board of Trustees of the Ojai Center for the Arts, and in that capacity, I want to thank James for the assistance he has given, both personally and as a representative of the city, over the years to the Arts Center. Thank you, James, and good luck. I normally do not come up and speak about Arts Center activities, but we have a couple of really phenomenal things going on that I wanted to share with the community. In a theater, we have Production Nonsense, which is a musical comedy. And when I use the word comedy, I don't mean a little tee-hee. I mean laugh-out-loud, very funny from beginning to end. That's the comedy part of it. The musical part of it, we have five actresses onstage, each with a better voice than the next one individually, and their harmonies are phenomenal. There's tap dancing, a little ballet, and a little ventriloquism. It's really, really, really a fun hour and 40 minutes. We have two more weekends, Friday night, Saturday matinees, Saturday night, Sunday matinee, and on our last weekend, we have an additional show on Sunday evening. So there's five shows the last weekend. You really should come and see it. It's at Ojaiact.org, O-J-A-I-A-C-T dot org for reservations. The other thing I want to mention, in the gallery, we have a phenomenal artist, local artist named Dominic Bro. He has both the display cases and the gallery walls. In the display cases, he has truly interesting sculptures, some of which is made out of palm fronds and things and vegetation that he somehow manages to turn into art. The paintings he has on the walls in the gallery and the fireplace room are really beautiful, and it's really worth stopping by. You can see it from noon to four every day of the week except Monday. And last, back to the theater, our youth branch production coming up is Shrek Jr. the Musical. It's playing August 11th through the 20th, three shows a weekend. Gay Jones, who is the director, is an internationally-recognized expert in theater and children. The shows she puts on are really fabulous. I go, I don't have grandkids or kids in the shows, I just go because it's fun. And Shrek is just more fun than most shows. So again, that's August 11th through the 20th, and again, Ojaiact.org, that is our youth branch. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Len. Fun. Next, we have Jill Dolan, then Randy Haney, then Steve Quilisi.
Okay, Lenny and I didn't plan to tag team or anything. I'm Jill Dolan. I'm always happy to be here in front of this happy little group. Oh, no, no, no. No, I am, and I know that tonight we'll have a big audience, so that's why I thought I'd come over. I made a lot of notes, they're so cluttered I can't even read them, but to those people at home who, or even the people in this room, who only get their fix on Ojai through these meetings, let me tell you, there's a whole other Ojai out there that's not quite as contentious, and it's really artsy and enjoyable, and you know what? It's yours, it's ours. And I've lived here a long time, I'm not going to go into the competition of who lived here longer, but it's weird. I lived here for many, many years and didn't know anybody, and then I went outside. And guess what, people? I was welcomed. I was welcomed at the Arts Center. I was welcomed at the Ojai Valley Museum, where, by the way, there is an extraordinary exhibit up right now. Get over there and look at it. So yes, we're doing nonsense at the Arts Center, and then we're doing a thriller, we're doing rope, but there's so much going on, and we are, I don't want to use the word desperate, because that sounds like I'm hanging on by my fingernails, but, you know, theaters are closing across the country. Big, famous ones are closing. The Mark Taper Forum in Los Angeles is cutting back or canceling its season. Museums aren't getting the attendance that they need. We are suffering because the people at home, the people who aren't out tonight must still be home sitting on their couches with their remote controls. We need you to come back out, come back out. We used to be such a thriving, we still, I mean, come out, you're just not going to believe who you're going to see out there. Suddenly, people will call you by name, they'll say, "Hi, Jill," or "I like your hair," or whatever, whatever your thing is. And I'm just here to say the fun things I've done this summer. The museum, of course, the Arts Center, I've seen it, I'm going to see it again. I've worked on the auditions for the upcoming show. I went to the Hitchcock Night that the Agora Foundation's doing. I'm even going to sing, okay, at Michael Estwannick's, you know, tribute to the Gershman's. There's stuff for you to do out there, and I want everybody to stop me in the market and say hello, and ask me when I'm doing this weekend, and I'm going to invite them to come along with me. So are you all committed? Yes, yes, are you all committed? All right, thank you, and have a good night. Thank you.
Thank you, Jill. Love it. Thank you. Next, we have Randy Haney, then Steve Quilisi, then Barbara Bowman.
Welcome. Or I should say, thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. James, I had no idea you were leaving tonight. I would have brought you something. But I can bring you just a grateful thank you for all that you've done for us. I remember when you first came on board that you had a lot of energy and a lot of integrity, a lot of honesty, and you just carried on with that for your last five years. So thank you. I came here, I think, five months ago, and, you know, I brought up the fact that I felt in that moment that our mayor had some problems and had some issues, and I still believe that, I still think, Mayor, that you have some ethical and you have some moral problems. I came here tonight trying to make a, I was going to try and make a point of what I'm hearing in the community, and it just saddens me to hear that a lot of people distrust you, and the word liar comes up, I don't know how many times. I don't want any public official to ever be called that, and I don't want, you know, hopefully no one called me that, and if they did, I hope they'd reach out and at least talk to me and ask me why I believe and why I do what I do. I find there's moments that you bring divisive issues to this council, which I see no reason for. I have no idea what your agenda is, but you have one. I've never seen an agenda in my 30 years in this community, yet there seems to be one. I just, I think it's got to stop. I wanted to quote you, because I thought it was very interesting that you would say it. "I'm a community leader. There is a problem, and I want to solve it." I think all of you are community leaders, and I think all of you, that applies to every one of you, it also applies to every one of us, because we are community members too, and we are community leaders too. We've got to figure out how to end this divisiveness. Maybe one of the things you might do the next time you go to put something on the agenda is reach over to one of these two and ask them to second it. I seriously mean that, because I think it's important that we try to create an environment where at least we're demonstrating that I hear you, I see you, and I have the ability to listen to you. So I'm not going to say too much more other than, again, thank you, James. It's a pleasure to see all you up here, and let's figure out how to remove the divisiveness from this community.
Thank you, Randy. Next, we have Steve Quilisi, then Barbara Bowman, then Steve Colome.
Thank you, Mayor, council members and staff. For those that don't know me, I am the chair of the Planning Commission right now. I am not here to speak on the item six that became item four, but rather on the direction that this council gave to staff recently to draft an ordinance on committee, excuse me, on commission composition and selection processes. And I have to say, I'm puzzled why this is necessary, why it's even being considered, at least as far as it applies to the Planning Commission. Excuse me. This is my eighth year on the Planning Commission, and I have to say, the current cast is the most diligent, thoughtful, and detail-oriented that I have had the pleasure to join. It has three city residents and two non-city residents. If there is a concern here about not being able to have a quorum with that composition, I have to tell you, it's happened once in those almost eight years. If there is a concern of the Planning Commission, quote, "not reflecting political positions from the City Council campaign," I am very puzzled. The Planning Commission is not a political body. We formally review and rule on cases for compliance with the Ojai Municipal Code, Planning and Zoning Ordinance, which is Title X. If you, as a council, don't believe that our deliberations reflect your political positions, you have the sole power to change the code. If you do change it, then the Planning Commission will formally review and rule on cases in compliance with that revised code. And every decision that we make can be appealed to the City Council in any case. As Mayor Styx said at the June 13th council meeting, we have to uphold the law, no matter what we think of it. I think it's safe to say there's a range of personal political opinions on the Planning Commission, but none of them are relevant to our jobs as planning commissioners. We review and rule on each case according to the code. I admit that you can, by majority vote, remove any commissioner at any time, but I think you would have to justify some action in an open public meeting so the citizens understand your reasoning, and the commissioner in question can be present to defend himself or herself. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Steve. Next, we have Barbara Bowman, then Steve Colome, then Andy Gilman.
Well, before this gets really divisive, Barbara Bowman, you can't hear me? God, I'm so loud. Before this evening gets really divisive, I wanted to do something on a positive note and start it out that way. I wanted to give a shout out to Judy Murphy and Jeffrey Starkweather for having that unhoused, affordable housing group that they put together. It was really wonderful. I was there, and James wrote that, I mean, it was a wonderful thing, and they had brought, and Jeffrey had kept me informed with emails of what's going on constantly, which is, I know he does the same for you, and he does the same for you. He's very good at keeping us informed. So what I wanted to thank him for all the efforts he's put into the homeless and the unhoused, and I wanted to say, that particular forum we had together, they had brought together Dignity Moves, and they brought together the Cabrillo Economic Development Corporation, who gave speeches, we got to ask them questions, and it all segued right into what Jane was talking about, meaning the Help of Ojai can work with them. In fact- In fact, the Cabrillo Economic Development Corporation is trying to do something on Bryant Street. And I think that's the only way we're going to get affordable housing, is we allow these developments that come in, pass them, get them through the City Council, and they can start being built for affordable housing. And I want, and the other forum that Jeffrey was very good at bringing about was he got Matt LeVere here to speak on a Sunday. And that was a wonderful thing. And Matt LeVere told us what he as a supervisor is actually doing, as our supervisor, in Ojai. And it was pretty remarkable. It was a pretty remarkable meeting. And if any of you were there, you would have been very pleased to know that our supervisor is doing an outstanding job. And knowing Jeffrey as long as I have, and thanking him for all the emails that he has gotten to me and to everybody else, keeping us informed, he's gone way beyond what a normal political activist would have to do to help every one of us. He has helped us see what our city can and can't do. And I appreciate that he's informed me and brought all these housing people together. And, I mean, I don't know, I would have not known any of the things I know without him. And the watching, the way he has conducted himself through all these different forums, I just wanted to say, wherever you are on vacation, if you tune in, thank you so much for the work you're doing and continue to do. I would not be the informed person I am. And James, I'm going to miss you. I am going to miss you. You got us through COVID, you handled the finances beautifully, and this town owes you a great deal. And thank you for being, going through what you're having to go through every council meeting. I'm sure you won't miss it. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you, Barbara. Next, we have Steve Colome, then Andy Gilman, then Alan Thornhill.
Well, my message is a bittersweet one and a heartfelt thank you to our city manager, James Vega. Ojai's loss is Port Juaniemi's gain at this point. As city manager for better than four and a half years, you've guided us through the pandemic and a crazy political season. You've been even-handed, smart, calm, and always wise. The, you have been, in fact, the glue that has held this city together during tumultuous times. And for that, we really thank you. You'll be moving on to a bigger stage now, surrounded by the city of Oxnard and the fourth-largest commercial port in the state of California. There are going to be many new and, and interesting challenges for you ahead. And to the council, we must remember that a highly competent city manager is necessary to oversee city operations. As voters within districts, we have no way of ensuring that the elected council before me has the professional experience and balance necessary to run a city. So, Ojai needs fiscal management, civil engineering, municipal planning, and legal acumen, all requiring specific professional training. I think your role as council should be to hire well and support the professional staff assembled by the manager. And for James, I wish you a bon voyage and happy sailing. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Steve. Uh, next we have Andy Gilman, then Alan Thornhill, then Sue Williamson.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak, and hello, council and everyone. Three quick points. First, James, you are such a gem, and we are absolutely going to miss you. And you said something to me that I have never forgotten since you said it. And you said, "My main job, when I wake up every morning and think about it, is to not screw Ojai up." And I've taken that to heart every single day since then. Thank you for that, and I wish you well, and I hope we stay friends. Second point, the Brown Bag Lunch has been set for Tuesday, August 1st. That is in Libby Park. It'll be a little bit behind the fountain. I will bring chairs, um, bring your own lunch. If you did not receive an email from me, please tell me. That means I do not have the right email for you. I did hear from prior council people related to the Brown Act. And Matt, I, please correct me or let anybody know if any, if I'm saying something that is changed or incorrect. Uh, the majority can't attend. What you would not do is caucus, go away separately and speak. I'm saying things you probably already know. But to hear issues is completely fine. To comment on things that are not coming in front of the council is completely fine. And so, you can absolutely say, "I can't discuss this because it's pending in the council." So, I'm going to leave that to you. But we've gotten really wonderful response, and I think we're going to have a, a very fertile conversation at these meetings. So, Tuesday, August 1st, is our first meeting. So, I hope to see you there. And then finally, I hope you can take this well, and it is this. I hope that you can embrace what I would call a passionate middle ground in what you decide. And that, it seems to me that what's missing and what can solve this difficulty that we're having as a community is, um, coming up with, with a real compromise. So that in what you decide and what you deliberate about, I hope that you can come from a position where you say, "I'm ready to move from what I think is the best because people disagree with me." So, nobody here won by a lot. Everybody gets that. We have a community that is more or less split. So, I hope that you act with that in mind. And I, it seems to me that is what's going to solve things here. So, I hope you can find this passionate middle. And I think that will go a long way towards solving what I think is, when people speak about divisiveness, it is absolutely there. Even if you talk to all these people that are friendly with you and have shared the same view, we are all doing that. And there, there are opposed views. So, good luck. Thank you.
Thank you, Andy.
And, Council, if I could jump in on that?
Yep, sure.
On the Brown Act, so yes, the council majority, so council same commission, can attend a meeting that is open, open and public and organized by an entity, not the city. So, here, Mr. Gilman's Chautauqua, Chautauqua Foundation Group can organize an event, and the majority of the council can attend. In attending, the council cannot step aside and make something, decide or discuss anything just as a cabal, nor can the council make any decision. So, even if it's open and public and in front, it still can't be a city decision. But discussions are okay as part of the program with the event being open to the public, which I understand this is. Thank you.
Can I ask a question about that? Um, would that also, uh, apply to, you know, saying, "That's a great idea"? Or would that apply to any opinions that we're making for ourselves personally about city-related issues?
Yeah, as long as it's not something that, in which there's a due process interest. So, an applicant who has a project pending before the city in which they have, they seek the protection of existing laws and thus have a due process right in those laws, such as a housing, a housing developer seeking a permit under existing law, they have a right to have a decision made by a neutral, unbiased decision maker. So, I would shy away from anything where someone's going to coming, be coming before the council with a particular application, seeking a particular permit. Avoid commenting on that and stating any opinion. But on something that's policy, like, should we amend the codes to do X or Y? I think that's a great idea, or I'm not sure about that, or I'd like to hear more. Any of those kinds of comments would be fine.
Thank you, Matt.
I have a quick question, Matt. Um, I was wondering if you could elaborate on what the due process right actually is. Um, I, I've read a little bit about it, but, but those coming in fr, and I will restate what I think I heard. Those coming in front of the council have a right to be heard without bias? Is, but, so, yeah, if you could explain, that would be really helpful to me. Thank you.
Sure, happy to. So, persons who are coming to the council who are seeking the protection of existing laws is distinct from asking for a change in the law. And you have a property right interest in the matter that they're seeking, have a right to due process. Due process entails notice, an opportunity to be heard, and a neutral, unbiased decision maker. Your classic example is an applicant who seeks a permit for a conditional use permit under the existing laws, not an applicant for a development agreement, which is changing the law. If you're changing the law, that's a policy choice, and there's no due process rights at all.
Okay.
If you're seeking the protection of current laws, saying, "I fit in this box, I should get my permit", then you have a due process right to a neutral, unbiased decision maker, notice of the decision, and an opportunity to be heard.
Great, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Matt. Uh, next we have Alan Thornhill, then Sue Williamson, then Renee Roth.
Good evening, everybody. I'm Alan Thornhill, and, uh, I've not been to a meeting for about a month and a half now or so. I was coming to every meeting because I, I do live here in this town. I've lived here most of my life. Raised my kids here, and I've worked here, and I hope to continue to live here, and I love living here. And, uh, I actually came from Juaniemi, where you're going. I, I was born and raised in Juaniemi. My family used to come up here. My dad had horses, and we had friends who had horses. And we'd go to Wheeler House Springs in the summertime in Ocala in camp. And it was always just such an amazing feeling, even as a kid coming to Ojai from Juaniemi. And, um, so, uh, I kind of thought that, uh, hopefully someday I'd live here. So, 50 years ago, I did move up here to meet a good friend of mine and play guitar together. And we've been doing it ever since, and that's what I've done in this town. I've worked as a carpenter and a guitar player, a teacher, and, uh, raised my kids and put them through school and coached Little League and, and tried to be a good neighbor to everybody. And that's what I've seen everybody here, for the most part, is that I noticed was that everybody was very conscientious about trying to be neighborly. And you didn't even have to try, just there's something about the place, or something in the water that makes you want to be that way. And, um, the reason I haven't come to any meetings in the last few weeks is because it just got to be painful listening to some of the, some of the dialogue that's been going on between, um, in this room, from different people. And, uh, and there's a lot of work that we all need to do. There's a lot of work that needs to be done. I know there's a lot of great work being done. And I just would like to say that I don't know, uh, I, I must be missing something because I, I just can't wrap my head around why it's so difficult to, to find peace in this, in this room and amongst the, and amongst the neighbors too. And, um, a lot of people get up here and say a lot of different things. And like, like I said, I, I only know what I know. I read the paper every week. I go to the police office and the stores, and, um, I'm here all the time. I've worked here all my life, and, uh, I've never seen such combativeness from, to me, what seems like a handful of people who all of a sudden heard just come on the scene and are, would rather argue and, uh, and, and make accusations and, and name-calling. And, and it's, it's not helping anybody. It's, it's slowing things down, and we do have a lot of work that's very important to be done. And, um, I, I don't have any more words to say, other than peace, please, from everybody.
Thank you, Alan.
Thank you.
Uh, next we have Sue Williamson, then Renee Roth, then Larry Steingold.
Good evening. I'm Sue Williamson, and I'm here today to talk about why the Teramina Historic District Ordinance should eliminate its roof requirements and request you to put this on an upcoming agenda for consideration. When Teramina was designated an historic district, the decisions made then created a situation that is preventing the Teramina Theosophical Community Incorporated, who actually created the community, from building low-income, affordable housing on their numerous empty lots due to restrictions on roof design. It's a fact that no house in Teramina could actually qualify as an historic landmark for numerous reasons, but primarily because these houses are of no significance architecturally. The only historical significance of the community is that it was created as a theosophical community. Even that is a stretch, since the theosophical community still exists and is not yet relegated to the history books. However, we do see the value in the designation, so as to prevent people from tearing down existing housing to build McMansions, for example. However, this should not apply to lots as yet undeveloped. There are approximately seven lots designated for residences, including one large 1.5-acre lot that is intended to have numerous living quarters for those who would need assistance as they aged. This has been completely thwarted by the roof design requirements. The current design creates a very dangerous fire hazard. It is expensive to replicate, thus defeating the TTC's purpose of providing low-income, environmentally-friendly, safe, and sustainable housing. As you may know, there are many new, innovative, creative, and economical designs and building techniques for affordable housing, which are no, now prohibited by this ordinance. Theosophy is a philosophy, not a dogmatic religion. It was, does not promote discriminatory, uninclusive ideas, such as every house must look some particular way. Rather, it promotes creativity, diversity, and compassion. That is why the TTC changed its focus from provide, to providing affordable housing after the courts ruled it could not be limited to just members of the Theosophical Society. This historic district ordinance directly interferes with this goal. Therefore, I'm requesting that this council consider eliminating the roof design requirements on Teramina by amending the current ordinance to reflect the true and valid historic significance of the community, rather than the artificial and illegitimate designation as it now stands. I would be happy to make a more detailed and thorough presentation to the council in the future, if you so desire. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Sue.
Mayor, may I ask, uh, would you mail, send that, what you just wrote to the council?
Okay.
I was the only, as you know, I was the, I believe I was the only council member present when we, uh, approved Ojai's first historic district in Teramina.
But you, you weren't on the council then?
Yes, I was.
No, you weren't? Because you spoke as a person in the audience, I remember.
What year was that?
Ah, it was like 2000.
Was it, was Mayor, was Johnny the Mayor?
Who?
Johnny Johnson?
Um, I don't remember the name.
Whatever, whatever. I'll look it up.
Yeah. I'll, I'll. I'll send it to you.
That would be great. Thank you, Sue. Thank you.
I, I, I agree, we need to revisit, I, we need to look at that. I agree with you. Yeah.
So, how do we get it on the agenda?
Uh, if you can send it to us, we can't discuss it right now. Uh, we can talk about it for future agendas.
Send, send it to the city clerk to distribute to the city manager and council.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you, Sue. Uh, next we have Renee Roth, then Larry Steingold.
Good evening, members of the council and mayor and staff. Okay, so, um, a couple of things. One of the things has to do with the appointment of members to the Planning Commission. And, um, I know Mr. Whitman said he wanted to have somebody who appointed, he could appoint who would be in alignment with his views. And as I go and look at our districts and our district maps and who is appointing who, I notice that, and Matt, this is directed to you, we have two members of the council who are already living in District Three. So, is there a mandate where members of the city council can actually have a specific appointment? Or is it a rotating appointment based on vacancies, and different members can have different appointments? That, that's just a, a question, because I, that was taken, that took me aback. And so, if you were to get rid of Mr. Starkweather, you would begin to have three members of the Planning Commission representing District Three. And I would, I have problems with that. Um, also, Mr. Vega, thank you very much for your years of service. You have always been diplomatic and kind. And I want to, you know, congratulate you really on being able to go to a new city. I looked at the city and looked at their meetings. Their meetings are like an hour and a half long, James. What are you going to do with all of this time that you have? And I also noticed is that at the beginning of the meeting, the mayor, which is a rotating mayor position, asks if there's any members of the council who have a conflict of interest with anything on the agenda. So, I bet there's a little bit of history there that maybe we have something to learn from. Um, because conflicts of interest, I think, are going around, and I'd like to see us address those. Um, going forward, I would like us to be able to talk about having an ethical code of conduct and modifying our protocols document. I sent an email, and it's on a different agenda item, and I won't talk about all of that. But I do feel that the divisive politics, we're at a crossroads here. In fact, we just have Carl in the audience. Your new, we should let the city manager introduce our new assistant city manager. Congratulations. So, anyway, best of luck to you, and look forward to more productive conversations. Thank you.
Thank you, Renee.
I have a quick, a quick, uh, comment. Um, thank you, Renee. I, I just wanted to let you know that our protocols document does have an exparté, um, condition, so that if you have spoken to someone who has an interest in whatever is before you, you are supposed to disclose. We don't have We don't have a mechanism by which that is asked and answered, so it is more in an honor system. So one of our priority items is to review the protocols document and potentially update it, so thank you for your suggestion.
Next we have Larry Steingold.
I'd like to lighten the mood a little bit. James, thank you very much, and Public Works also, they did pave behind the alleyway, behind the medical store, medical center. Anyway, Mr. Whitman, two weeks ago, or maybe four weeks ago now, said he agreed with me we should raise the sales tax, and then he mentioned, but for the general fund. And the answer is no. You cannot get your hands on the money to spend on other projects. If you're going to raise any money, it's going to be specified for the roads, for the pension, or for some affordable housing, I don't care. You can't get your hands on the money, because you'll spend it, just like everybody else, and if I was there, it'd be the same thing. Okay? We have to restrict ourselves and keep our hands in our pockets. I went to a meeting this morning at the Ojai Unified School District for Real Estate, for what they're doing. You've got to get ramped up, because they're going to dispose of the property, or they're going to do something with chaperal, excuse me, legacy, whatever. Okay? You've got to get up and running, now. All right? Whatever it is, whether we buy it, take it, do whatever it is, but you've got to start planning now and act on it, because they're going to get rid of it whether we want it or not, or whatever laws we can contrive, whatever. Anyway, I sent something to all of you regarding cash payments for retail stores. It's really discriminatory, because there are two restaurants in town now, nice restaurants, but they only take credit cards, can't take cash. If you have lousy credit, no credit, don't want to get into debt, don't want to spend it on a credit card, let them pay cash. All right? I want to pay cash. If you want a discount for cash, that's fine, too. All right? But now, the status of the rescind letter, can you get into that after I sit down? Because you were rescinding the letter? Or that didn't get rescinded or something?
That's not on the agenda.
That's right, so I can talk about it.
What are you talking about?
You can't, they can't.
They can't? Okay, I'm just saying.
What are you talking about?
Couple of weeks ago, they were talking about rescinding the letter to the DA.
Oh.
So, status, okay. But more importantly, the Ojai Avenue Demonstration Project, is that ever going to happen? Isn't that Phase Two of the Maricopa Project? So shouldn't we get a demonstration of it?
You're asking when are we going to get an update?
Just a reminder, we can't discuss.
Okay, fine. Mr. Vega's still here, so he can, he may have to come back, whether he wants to or not. God knows what happens. Where are we on the ATP Maricopa, Ojai Avenue Extension? You can get into that. Thank you.
Thank you, Larry.
I can briefly answer, it's not on the agenda, so he can't deliberate. But first, I'll note, I think he was saying I'm going to get fired from Huaynimi very quickly, which is, thank you for the confidence, Larry.
For the reason.
Thanks for the vote of confidence. So we are, we have the Maricopa Demonstration Project, that was not part of the actual ATP grant. The city went out and got a separate grant to do a demonstration because of the impact of that lane reduction. Because there was no lane reduction proposed for Ojai Avenue, there is no demonstration project planned. So to answer the question, there is no demonstration project planned for Ojai Avenue. There is eventually the installation of bicycle improvements and pedestrian improvements, but there is not a demonstration project.
Thank you, James. All right, that ends our first section of public comment, we'll take the rest later. Yep.
I don't have a card on file, but I would like, I'm Cindya Burrell, and I'm the city clerk for the City of Ojai. But I would like to make you all aware that Leonard Clafe mentioned Shrek. Can you hear me now? Leonard Clafe mentioned Shrek. And I, Susan may know, but y'all should know that Shrek was developed right here in Ojai, was created. Bonnie Doran, who was a dispatcher, do you remember Bonnie? She was a dispatcher for Ojai Police Department. When we went to the sheriff's department, she stayed on until she passed away. Her son, Walt Junior Doran, created Shrek. And he went to school here at Nordoff. And if you watch the movie sometimes, you can see he created a character in there that looks like his twin sister, Janelle. But it turns out that if you remember Bonnie Lou's, that was named, that's Bonnie Lou's kids that own the restaurant. So, but y'all need to know that, because he worked with Steven Spielberg.
That's so interesting.
Thank you, thank you for sharing, Cynthia.
Article press, do an article on that.
All right, we will, we'll take the rest of the comments after Discussion Item Two.
Yeah, Mayor, and it's worth indicating, for all the participants on Zoom, we'll take your general public comments after, and our remainder portion of public comment after Item Two.
Thank you, Weston. All right, we'll move on to Item Number Two, Adoption of a Resolution Amending the Salary Schedule to Increase Compensation for the City Manager Classification Compensation.
And Madam Mayor, we should probably take consent first before-
Oh, sorry, skipped right over it. Okay, we have, let's move on to the consent calendar, thank you very much, Matt. And we have one, we have one comment, so let's take the comment first. It's on D, Consent on D, William Wirick?
James, I have a feeling that your experience with Oxnard and other general level of sophistication had something to do with your attractiveness to be hired at Huaynimi. Certainly our loss, you're going to be involved with all kinds of interesting challenges, the relationship between the city and, of Oxnard, Huaynimi, the port, which is growing faster than LA, the transportation arteries, and of course, the military base. So the challenges will keep coming, I'm sure you're going to be on top of them, so congratulations. On, I wanted to comment on one D, because, James, you sold yourself a little short in your staff report there, because I think the council should understand the depth of sophisticated analysis that James did. I know that because I work with him very closely on the analysis, having to do with the sheriff's contract. And I almost want to add a couple of things, because, for example, James was instrumental in our determining that the sheriff's department, by allocating 50% overhead to the City of Ojai, was overallocating the overhead costs for the sheriff's station, which serves the entire district. I noticed that the request for minimum service includes the implication of the 50% overhead still. I was disappointed to see that. I would hope that this council would direct the new city manager to continue looking carefully at getting a proper contract with the sheriff's department, and also to be careful about requesting a minimum service requirement that is a policy decision by the Ventura Sheriff's Department. Many other sheriff's departments take small cities and do fractional minimum service allocations, which has not been a policy available by the Ventura Sheriff's Department, therefore increasing the cost per capita to the City of Ojai taxpayers way out beyond what any other city has to pay. So I would just be careful and ask this council to continue to focus on the fact that it's not the service levels that we were talking about, in terms of the problems that we needed to upgrade, we need to have a proper contract, we don't want to renew a contract in a de facto way. And there were other issues that we were dealing with, for example, formal process of enforcement priorities, formal process of community involvement, that we want to see in a new contract, and not have, just continue roll over provisions from decades and decades of no real contract. So again, James, you sold yourself short, we did a whole lot more work on this than you showed in the staff report. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill.
Can we ask, may I ask a question? Oh, yeah, because I remember we had all those meetings about the contract, and I don't know whatever happened with that. Does this have to be, we have to consent tonight, or can we request that this be a future agenda item, so we can do it properly and address what former council member Bill Wirick stated?
So, per our existing contract, which we have asked for an updated contract, but per our existing contract, the city is required to request service for the coming year when we adopt the budget. And so this accomplishes that. In the staff report, we didn't get into all the details, but we did make the point that we haven't conceded yet, we've never agreed that we're just going to stop the discussion on the new contract. And in fact, the sheriff Freihoff, who was our chief, two chiefs ago, and sheriff Rivera, who is now his assistant sheriff, who was our last chief, have both, I've had discussions with both about the fact that they worked here, they understood differently than the prior sheriff had, and that they are willing to look at the contract and come back with some improvements that would then come to the council, and the council could discuss those and consider, you know, approving a new contract. I don't know, let me stop short of, I don't know that the sheriff has guaranteed a new contract, he's guaranteed, they've said they'll have improvements, it may be a new contract, and so that'll be the ongoing discussion. And so for tonight, it's the requesting the service to continue, because technically, if we don't request it, we're not, you know, we haven't satisfied our end of the deal. But it's not intended to be the end-all, be-all, and I think with Sheriff Freihoff coming in, I think he's, he is really willing to take a look and try to figure out how to make things right. I will say, kind of, my, maybe starting to veer off topic, but it's relevant to this. In general, I think that a lot of our agreements, a lot of our contracts with the county go back 50 to 100 years, when I think the population split was more just 50/50. It's not anymore. We're one-third or even one-fourth of the, of the Ojai Valley. And so I think just in general, on these contracts and on other county contracts, which Matt's probably going to stop me from saying too much more, I would say be cautious of, you know, the inclination is to immediately agree to, well, let's just split everything 50/50. And I think part of that is also because traditionally, Ojai has been able to afford 50/50, but that hasn't necessarily meant that it's a fair deal for everybody. So I've made that point to the sheriff, to the prior sheriff, and I've had the discussion with, with our new sheriff. The new sheriff said he's going to look at it, but as you can imagine, him being elected in November, he's got 1,000 things going on, so this is intended to give us a year to do that, so.
Thank you.
Thank you, James.
Very important.
And I'd just like to echo Bill's appreciation and gratitude for James' work on this, it was pretty constant for a long time, so thank you.
So we'll add this to the list if it's not there.
Well, future agenda items go at the end, so let's wait for that.
And Mayor and Council, the council can also provide that as part of the direction under Item Five regarding priorities, that staff continue to work and put that on the new city, interim city manager's to-do list, as the council desires. But approving tonight does not block that discussions.
Thank you, Matt.
We can do it now, right? We don't have to wait till the end.
No, we need to wait till that, the item is just to approve the request for this year.
Okay.
The direction to keep working can come with that other item.
Okay, thank you.
Any consent comments online, Weston?
No, Mayor, we had two raised hands for general public comment.
Okay, all right, is there a motion to approve the consent calendar?
I'll move to approve.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Wonderful. Okay, we will move on to Item Number Two, Adoption of a Resolution Amending the Salary Schedule to Increase Compensation for the City Manager Classification Compensation. James, we have a staff report?
Yeah, and I'm going to turn it over to Matt, who's been involved with the interim placement.
Yes, thank you, thank you, Madam Mayor and Council. Before your two related items, the first is Item Two regarding the city manager classification in the salary schedule, the second will be the contract for Mr. Scott, if approved. The first one is to approve an adjustment, amending, a resolution amending the salary schedule to increase the compensation range for the city manager classification from its current $181,543.68 is a minimum and a maximum, which is also Mr. Vega's current salary, to now be a minimum of $181,543.68 and a maximum of $225,000. Those are both annual figures, the monthly and hourly breakdown is as stated. The proposal is that the council would approve that tonight to be effective July 15, 2023, so thus effective with the new interim city manager, not amending the contract for Mr. Vega. And staff recommends that the council do so, reflecting the market, and in part, the need to be competitive in the search for a interim and prospective permanent city manager. It's worth noting that this is the minimum and maximum range, the precise schedule, or salary, rather, for the interim city manager would be set by the next item at the amount so stated there, and the precise salary for the future permanent city manager will be set by the council within that range as negotiated. It's a minimum and a maximum, not a guarantee on the maximum component, and the council can of course amend that range further as discussions continue with a prospective, future permanent city manager. With that, I'm available for any questions, thank you.
Thank you. Any questions from council?
I have a question. So we just approved the budget, and I was wondering if we could, if you could speak to where this would fall within the budget?
The expected cost increase will come out of the contingency fund. We don't yet have a precise figure for what that would look like, because we don't have a sense of how long we will have an interim, and we're estimating probably six months is a reasonable estimate. It does take some time to recruit, bring up to speed a permanent city manager, and the budget can accommodate that out of the contingency, but we can get precise figures.
Yeah.
James, may I have more?
Yeah, very simply, when we adopted the budget, we had a $400,000 contingency, and I think there's a few things that we've started to see that we anticipate coming from that contingency. One would be, you know, the increase in salary for the incoming city manager, but also potentially recruitment costs for a city manager. And so it can be accommodated in there, but the point that we kept reiterating during the budget process is, you know, that will, that means there's less money available for other things that come up during the year. And so this is an important one to accommodate, but that's why it's important to kind of keep that in mind every time we tap into that fund, because it's, it's limited, so.
Thank you, James.
I have a sort of a follow-up, thank you for that question, Councilmember Lang. So we have started to draw on that contingency plan, so I'm wondering if we can also keep track of how we're drawing on it, because we've drawn a couple of times already in anticipation. So when we do start getting requests via the contracts and things like that for city services, it would be very good for, just to have an ongoing sense of what that, where that contingency fund actually is, so thank you.
Yeah, that's a really good point, and we'll, we will make sure that when there is an item considered to be funded from contingency, that we'll list what has already been funded that year.
Thank you.
Great.
Quick question, same topic. What is the fiscal year that we're running the contingency fund?
So the fiscal year started July 1, and so we are 10 days in, and so just, again, the point I always make is $400,000 sounds like a lot, but it starts to go quickly when the unexpected occurs. And so we're 10 days in, and like I said, to this point, for this fiscal year, last fiscal year, there were some costs attached to contingency. This fiscal year, it would be the city manager costs and the recruitment costs are the two things that, that we've started, that we, that we expect to come from that fund at this point.
Thank you. All right, we will move on to public comment, we have one public comment, William Wirick.
Short request, after you approve this tonight, which I expect you to do, how about also directing a little short bio, resume, post on the website, just so people know who the new person is? I'd like a little bit more flesh on the bone, if you could, thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Any comments online, Weston?
No, Mayor.
Okay, all right, well, let's move on to discussion. Who would like to begin?
I'll make a motion that we approve the first, Phase One of this, of this document, the resolution to amend the salary schedule.
And I'll second the motion.
Are we ready for a roll call?
Yes, Mayor. Councilmember Lang?
Yes.
Mayor Stix?
Yes.
Councilmember Rule?
Yes.
Councilmember Whitman?
Yes.
Mayor Protam Francina?
Yes.
Great, thank you. All right, we will move on to the remainder of public communication.
Yes, we'll start on Zoom. We have two raised hands on Zoom, and a reminder to our participants, this is for general public comment. First, we have Leslie Ferraro, followed by Tina Brumond. Leslie, you have the floor.
Thank you. First and foremost, I want to say thanks so much to James Vega for all the work that he's done on short-
he's done on short-term rentals in the city of Ojai. It's truly amazing what he's been able to do, and this comes from someone who is a renter and has struggled finding housing. And on a follow-up to that, I personally think if you own not one but two short-term rentals in the city of Ojai, you really should not be talking about the housing crisis in the city of Ojai. Thank you.
Thank you, Leslie.
What did she say? I didn't get that.
I'll be happy to repeat it if I'm not on mute.
Could you repeat that, Leslie?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
First, I wanted to say thanks to James for all the work that he's done on short-term rentals, and second, I wanted to follow that up with, if you own not one but two short-term rentals in the city of Ojai, you ought not be talking about the housing crisis in the city of Ojai.
Thank you, Leslie.
Next, we have Tina Brumond, Tina, you have the floor.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I wanted to make the council aware of some activity by AutoZone, and while that is in the Oakview area, I wanted to make sure that the city council of Ojai was aware that the AutoZone that is trying to go into the old Hilltop Bar location is attempting to amend the Ojai area plan. I have asked Supervisor Leveer on two separate occasions now to please clarify if this is site-specific to the Hilltop Bar location, or if their application is more widely going to be interpreted through all commercial activity under the Ojai area plan. The reason why I am very concerned about this, and would like Ojai to start poking around also, is that AutoZone recently conducted a traffic study at 34 different locations throughout the wider Ojai Valley in very suspect spots that have no implication on the AutoZone going in in Oakview, for instance, traffic counting monitors across from the meadows in, by Nordoff. I am also wondering, as a very specific question, are Ojai city planning commissioners allowed to work on behalf of other enterprises, like possibly AutoZone, in order to get them in? Or is their work limited and they are not able to freelance outside of their job as a planning commissioner? I ask this specifically because Starkweather has been at the MAC several times bullying them to change metrics for traffic monitoring when they had no intention of adopting it at the county at that point in time. I am curious what's going on, because this does not seem right, and it seems like it is beyond the scope of what would require an entire general plan amendment to the Ojai area plan, and I'm wanting to make sure that you guys are aware of it. Thank you.
Thank you, Tina.
That's all on Zoom, Mayor.
Is there a, thank you, James.
Yeah, there's a lot to that one, I don't have anywhere to start. I, I think I'll start with just a little bit of background on what we do know on this, which is that, I think it was late last year, the county planning staff informed us that the county had made a legal determination, legal interpretation might be a better word, that the limit that used to exist on not approving projects that allow additional traffic trips could not legally apply to residential housing projects anymore. And so we had been informed of that, we were not asked our opinion, we were not asked if the city opposed or supported it, we were just informed that the county had made that determination, and that's how they would proceed. And so at that time, I informed the council that, you know, it's their determination, and that's how they were proceeding, and so we were aware of that. I think the project, what's different that Tina's referring to is the idea that that's now being applied to commercial development, which I have not heard formally yet. Tina had emailed the other day and asked if we had heard this, and I said we have not heard that. That would be a change, and that would be something that we have not heard to date. And so again, without being able to get into it too much, the council may, you know, provide direction to have a future discussion on that, and whether we would ask the county to clarify that position, and that's something we can do as staff, is just asking for that clarification. The second point about the commissioner advocating at the MAC meetings for this, I think it simply boils down to the commissioner has their own freedom of speech and everything else to show up at a meeting and advocate on their own behalf, but they shouldn't be showing up and advocating as planning commissioners or as city representatives on something that the city council has not authorized them to do that on. And so I don't know the specifics, and I don't know whether he was identifying himself as a planning commissioner, but that's how that would boil down, and as we were, we were planning to do some training for the commissioners, and one thing we might want to include in that is the clarification about roles, and, you know, when you represent yourself and when you represent the city, but that's the short answer to that.
Thank you, James.
May I just add, just so everyone knows, we do ask that a planning commissioner attend the MAC meetings. That's correct. We, we want someone from the planning commission to attend the MAC meeting.
Yeah, I don't, I don't.
There's a liaison.
I don't know the history of if the council requested that or not, but I know that the planning commission has a liaison who attends each MAC meeting and then comes back and reports to the commission on what's happening in the county.
Yeah, so, so, I mean, and then, of course, we need to clarify that they, if they do speak, they absolutely have to clarify that they're speaking just as a, as a public citizen.
Yeah, exactly.
That's correct.
Okay, that's it, Weston?
Yes, Mayor.
Okay, we will move on to agenda item number three, employment agreement for interim city manager Mark Scott.
And Mayor and Council, I'll take this one as well. So before you, as a proposed employment agreement and resolution approving the employment agreement for an interim city manager, Mark Scott, to start on July 15, he would be paid the PERS annuitant adjustment to the salary is just approved, which is maximum salary of $225,000 per year. He would be paid that salary on a purely hourly basis at $108.17 per hour worked, as required by the applicable statutes governing a PERS annuitant. For those not familiar with it, a PERS annuitant is a, is a person who has served in government service and who has retired from the PERS system. PERS is the public employee's retirement system, so they're retired from PERS, they're allowed to return to service without reinstating from retirement, provided certain requirements are met, including that the position is necessary to be filled with a person with specialized skills who is qualified to serve the position on an interim basis in order to prevent stoppage of public business and continue cities operations during recruitment for a permanent appointment, with a maximum of 960 hours worked within a fiscal year, and the compensation is limited to that maximum salary schedule converted to a specified hourly rate. So as noted, that's what Mr. Scott would be paid on an hourly basis. He is entitled only to that hourly pay, not to any other benefits, as would be typical for a typical permanent employment city manager. And the agreement otherwise covering, includes the standard terms and conditions of employment, and the 960-hour maximum is on a fiscal year basis, and that works out to at full-time about six months. It can be stretched if, if the Mr. Scott worker worked less than full-time as the recruitment proceeds. And with that, we're available for any questions, thank you.
Mayor, can I just quickly add? Just the comment about the resume. So we do have a press release prepared, and we'll be releasing that today, we'll make sure we post that on the website. City manager paranoia is you don't announce anything until the council approves it, because it's not official until the council approves it, so, so we'll be announcing it as soon as it's appointed, assuming it's appointed. And, but as far as resume goes, Mark Scott served as city manager of Beverly Hills from 1990 to 2003, and since that time has also served as city manager for Spartanburg, South Carolina, Fresno, Burbank, San Bernardino, Indio, and most recent, Lincoln, and most recently Downey. And so he has a lot of experience, a wealth of experience, and when we put our press release out, we'll have some more information.
And the only thing I'll add to that on the resume side is his degrees. CSU Fresno, BA in political science and public administration, and a master's from Stanford, and MBA in the Graduate School of Business.
Thank you, thank you. Any questions from council?
Maybe we should tell the.
Well, any public comment?
No raised hands on Zoom, Mayor.
Okay, we will move on to discussion.
Oh, I just wanted to say that we, the council unanimously, was unanimous in, in their selection, and I especially noted that he had stated that he had watched the last three meetings, and he's probably watching right now, or will watch the recording, so he knows what he's, he's stepping into, and we all really, really liked him, yeah. A very skilled person.
Yeah, and one thing I just wanted to reiterate, he has such a great, just breadth of experience, and he says that he really likes challenges, and, and that he doesn't want to go to an easy city without a lot to do. So I think he's going to be, even though, James, we're going to miss you terribly, and I, you know, I'm, I'm heartbroken over you leaving us, I think Mark Scott is going to be, and he's going to be, I think, a good interim city manager, and, and hopefully, you know, he, he can help to, help us to heal some of the divides that, that we have. So before we move on to the next more permanent city manager.
Anyone else? Andy?
I'll, I'll comment and just say that I think all of us expressed that he was overwhelmingly the most qualified to do the job, and he has over 40 years of experience with being a city manager, and he has had the last two or three years' experience with coming in on interim, interim basis. And he spent time, you know, talking with us about his plans, you know, early, and he seemed to know, you know, he inspired a lot of confidence.
Yeah.
Welcome, Mark. I mean, and he was, he seemed to be a truly nice guy. I mean, he had a great demeanor and, you know, but still, 40 years' experience, you know, we got the sense he knew, he knows the job, and so we were quite impressed and confident in him.
Yes, very exciting. Hi, Mark, out there in Fresno, we're looking forward to getting to know you, and we're excited and grateful that you're coming, so, and as much as we will miss James, I can't talk about it. Okay, is there a motion?
Well, approve, a motion to approve the attached interim city manager employment agreement with Mark Scott, right? That's the motion?
And the resolution approving that.
And second?
I'll second it.
Okay, roll call, please, Weston?
Yes, Mayor. Councilmember Whitman?
Yes.
Councilmember Lang?
Yes.
Mayor Protam Francina?
Yes.
Councilmember Rule?
Yes.
Mayor Stix?
Yes.
Okay, wonderful. All right, we will move on to item number six that has been moved up.
Mayor, just quickly, sorry to interrupt. Could I, it's not on the agenda, because it happened very quickly, but it's some more good news, could I introduce our new assistant city manager as well?
Great, yeah.
So hopefully, he hasn't stepped away yet. So Carl Alameda is our new assistant city manager, he started with us yesterday, and he's getting up to speed quickly, and I will let him introduce himself rather than me do it for you.
Thank you, James. Good evening, council and community members, my name's Carl Alameda. As James just mentioned, I just started yesterday, so I'm kind of learning the ropes here. I have over 20 years of municipal experience, and prior to that, I worked for a. Oh, you can't hear me? Okay, is that better? Perfect. Okay, my name is Carl Alameda, I have over 20 years of municipal experience, prior to that, I worked for a state senator for about two years, Jack O'Connell, who represented the northern part of Ventura County at the time, Santa Barbara and San Luis Obispo. My education background of a bachelor's from Cal Poly San Luis Obispo, and two master's degrees from USC, and masters of planning and a masters of public administration. I look forward to contributing to Ojai, it's been exciting, everyone I met is very welcoming, the staff seems fantastic, they are very ambitious. I've been very impressed with the staff, and also, James, have been very giving of his time to bring me up to speed in this, this week that we have, and look forward to working with Mark Scott, it's someone I, from his Burbank days, I've met a handful of times, but I know the folks that have worked with him speak very highly of him, so look forward to working with him. And again, look forward to meeting each of you and getting to know you better, as well as the commissioners and members of the community. Thank you.
So just quickly, James, you did a little thumbnail sketch about the scope of what he's gonna do, I think it'd probably be helpful, maybe it would deter some people from calling him for, on a topic that he's not really.
I saw people lining up already. So obviously, you know, the next city manager could come in and completely change things, but the idea was to have the assistant city manager focus on more sort of the internal services, the human resources, risk management, information technology, working with the finance department, and making sure all those things are working together, the public information and events coordinator, you know, all those types of things. And so that, that was what we had, we had prepared an organizational chart, and we were working towards that, and I think we had a quick conversation with Mark Scott, and he said that that sounds like a, a good plan at this point, and it may change in the future, but for now, that's, that's the, the way we're planning to kind of organize our, our team moving forward, so.
Well, welcome, Carl, thank you for being here, and we're excited to work with you and grateful that you're here, so.
Thank you very much.
Welcome.
Yeah.
All right, well, it's 10 till 8, so how about we take a five-minute break, and then we will come back with item number six. Thank you. Thank you. Okay, we are back. If you all could take your seats and we will begin with agenda item number four, a request to remove Planning Commissioner Jeffrey Starkweather from the Planning Commission. And if we could come to quiet, please. And there is a staff report which I wrote and I'm not going to read it. I just want to say that, of course, my motivation in putting on the agenda is always to do what's best for our town, to take care of our town and specifically here, to take care of our city staff, which, as I said, is so wonderful and it's great to have new people coming, as much as we will miss James. So I think that it's really important that we deal with this sooner rather than later. And I just think as a city council, we really have to look at what is the best decision for our city so that things run in harmony and there's a positive atmosphere at City Hall. So it's unfortunate that Commissioner Starkweather is out of town, but once again, I do not want to delay it because there is a Planning Commission meeting on the 19th and I think we need, we owe it to our community to make that decision before the next meeting. So that's why I would like to do it tonight. As a woman and a teacher of thousands of young women over the decades, I also have a responsibility to women to deal swiftly with this in a timely manner. And I would really like to stick to the facts here and what has been written, not conjecture, not motivation, just the facts. And Commissioner Starkweather disparaged several city residents who are running for city council in the election by referring to them as weak, young female opponents. This was not a passing statement. This was an email discussing political strategy for the election. It went out to several people in our community. We need to be able to look at our daughters in the eyes. They deserve to be seen as the smart, strong, and capable young women who they are. How can we not address this for them? In addition, Mr. Starkweather has belittled city staff, council members, and residents as evidenced in innumerable emails. This behavior by a representative of the city needs to be addressed now, not later. This has gone on too long and we have to do something for the sake of young women, our city staff, our city government, and our community. So I think it's really important to look at the role of a commissioner. What is a commissioner there to do? They're appointed by the city council to advise the city council and we are grateful to have these commissioners, so many experts on the commissions, so much expertise. We rely on them and it's a, it's a great gift to our community that these commissioners give us. On the other hand, there is a specific role and as Chair Quilisi noted, the role is to enforce code. It's not to make policy, it's not to question policy, it's to enforce code. So that said, I think it's, it's the best thing for our city to move swiftly and do this now. So I'm going to stop there. If there are any questions, otherwise, we do have a lot of comments, so we'll go ahead. Questions?
Yes, Weston, is Jeffrey Starkweather on the, is he on Zoom?
No, I do not see.
Okay. Did, had, did he reach out to anyone and ask to, for a continuance?
Yes.
Okay.
Microphone?
Yes, Jeffrey Starkweather has indicated that, of course, he prefers to be here in person. It's probably about 5:00 a.m. We don't even know if he has internet. He could be on a train, he could be, you know, because he has just his little device, so he is not able to weigh in. But, you know, this is a very different, because usually, we have some kind of staff, staff report.
Let's stick to questions, so that's the.
Well, I have a question, I have a question. You, there is no staff report backing up your allegations and it seems like, I mean, my number one question of you, Mayor Sticks, is have you discussed these concerns with Jeffrey Starkweather? Have you ever had a one-on-one conversation with him to discuss these concerns? Have you, if you've known about this email since August, I mean, I don't understand why this is.
Just to confirm, that email was, came, became public about 10 days ago, so that's why, that's why it's coming.
Yes, and I wonder why it became public and I.
Well, hey, Mayor Protem, this is the time for questions. If you have any specific questions about this, otherwise, I think we have a lot of public comments, we should move ahead.
Yes, we do, but I, since you are able to express your characterization of the situation, I at the very least want to point out that there was never.
This is still, if you have a question, please ask a question, but please save, save your comments.
My question is this, how did you arrive at the assumption that those three words that he used in an email, weak, young female opponents, how did you jump to the conclusion that this makes him a misogynist? It was obviously a private political email that came from Mark Whitman to Heidi Whitman. She showed it to me and it was never.
Mayor Protem, that doesn't seem like a question, so let's, let's.
My question is, my question is, how did you jump to the conclusion and spread the rumor in the community that this makes Jeffrey Starkweather a misogynist?
I didn't do that. Okay, let's move on to public comment?
I also have a question and it really does relate to this. I'm uncomfortable that your statement here, when you say facts, this is nothing but, I mean, there are a few facts in here, but this is innuendo, so.
Is this a question?
Yeah, the question is, I would like you to be genuine and honest when you say things. That is my question.
That's not a question.
Would you please, would you please be genuine and honest when you say things?
Absolutely, I will.
That's my first question to you. And also, as an educator of young women, I know exactly how this works. My question is, do you think you are the only educator of young women and that because of that, you have a right?
No, I don't. I know there are many, many wonderful educators out there.
That's right. There are.
Okay, let's move on to, yeah, yeah.
I do have one more question and this is for the city attorney. What is, just to reiterate what the process is for removing Commissioner?
Right, so for, it's governed slightly differently by each commission here. We're talking about the Planning Commission, which is governed by Ojai Municipal Code, section 10, 1.02, which states in part, "Any member of the commission may be removed by the mayor, subject to the approval of the council or by a majority vote of the council." That's it, the only line in the code is that. If removed, then the, they, members shall hold office until successes have been qualified and appointed and qualified. A person who is appointed to fill a vacancy shall hold office for the remainder of the unexpired term. So if a commissioner is removed, then the seat, the rest of the seat would be filled by that council member corresponding for the remainder of the term. The other requirement that's inherent in, court decision is not inherent in the code, is basic due process here, that there be notice to the commissioner to issue, an opportunity for them to be heard. And that has been provided, as I understand it, because the city manager sent specific notice to Commissioner Starkweather of this agenda item and he has the opportunity to be heard by Zoom. The council can hear the matter tonight or continue it as the council may desire after taking public comment.
I have a question.
Just to answer the earlier question, so I don't see Mr. Starkweather in the room, but I do see somebody named DeeDee, which I believe is Mr. Starkweather's wife, so. Is it a different person? Okay, I was going to say we could ask, but if.
Mayor Sticks, you didn't answer my question. My question was, have you ever had a conversation about these concerns with Commissioner Starkweather? Because usually, if there's a concern, we start by discussing it with the commissioner.
Yes, and the city staff, specifically our city manager, did discuss it with him.
That's not my question. I quote, "You as mayor, did you discuss it with him?" That's my question.
No, we did not discuss that. The city manager discussed it with them and now, as a council, we are discussing it.
One of, I mean, one of the reasons why I was asking this question to the city attorney is I want to make sure that Mr. Starkweather gets due process.
Yeah, my advice is that Mr. Starkweather has been given due process because he has been given specific notice of the agenda item and the opportunity to be present. I realize he's in Ireland and that opportunity may be difficult to exercise, but the opportunity has been there. The council, of course, could choose to provide above the minimum and continue the matter or make the decision tonight. Either would be legal.
All right, let's move on to public comment.
I have a question for the city manager. So it, you are, you are pointed out here to, as one, you responded to the email from Commissioner Starkweather and you responded, you're sending several of these a day, but you're sending policy debate to staff, which is not the process and staff are not able to spend city resources on that. Unless and until the city council directs staff to do so, in the future, these would be appropriate to send to the city council and it would be their choice whether or not to agendize them. Did you send me a similar email?
I think so.
Yes, you did.
Yeah.
Yes, you did. You were a little bit politer, but you told me that, and so my next question to you is, has Jeffrey Starkweather used up staff time, other than your time, which is your job to tell him it's inappropriate, what he's doing? That falls under your job, which it seems to me you did here. And we don't know if there were any emails after Jeffrey was asked not to do it, Mr. Starkweather. I know that I got the message and I didn't do it again, but I also know, I didn't know that. I didn't know that I couldn't call up the CDC, the Lucas and say, "Can you give me the background on SB 649?" I didn't know that until you actually sent me an email and said that to me, at which time I stopped, I think. So I would ask you, have I sent you any more of those emails? That you know of?
No, you haven't. And I think to answer the question about Mr. Starkweather, yeah, I'll just make the point that, you know, a lot of people don't understand what the city manager's job is in a nutshell and it's, in the nutshell, it's to manage the city's resources, the limited resources we have, to get done the priorities of the city council, who represents the community. And so one of my jobs, even though it's not the most fun thing to do, is when people start asking us, "Why aren't you doing this other thing that I think is really important?" Is my job is to explain, that's not how the process works and you need to talk to the city council and public comment and you need to get the city council to agree and then tell me to do, you know, tell me to tell the staff to do it. And so it is part of my job. I, I did send the email to Mr. Starkweather because at that point, and especially immediately after the election, I think he was sending emails to us arguing that items should be on the agenda immediately and I, my response was, "The council dictates what's on the agenda." And I haven't checked my email to see, you know, how many emails he sent before that or after that, but in a short answer is that it definitely, and I did my job, I addressed the issue and we have not gotten nearly as many of those emails and it's probably been few since February, since February 23rd.
And do you, to my other question, do you know if any staff time, did you forward any of those emails? Did Lucas respond to any of those emails? Did Sherry respond to any of those emails? Is, as I understand it, standard practice within City Hall is that it goes through you before any work is done and that your process is, if it has anything to do with policy, it goes back. it goes back to the city council.
Yep.
And you have been firm on that point.
Correct. And I would say, um, when this happened, if my memory serves, I sent an email out to all staff saying, "If you get policy questions from this person, I have notified them that this is the process. And if you get them, you can forward them to me and I will continue to notify them that this is the process." And so, um, I would say maybe, you know, not to speculate, I think it depends on the city manager being willing and able to do that, and I think with the change coming, reinforcing that for the city manager and the staff will be important. But from my perspective, it was my job and I addressed it, so.
Thank you.
Okay, we will move on to public comment. First, we have Marcy Toshier, then Jody Kaler, then Barbara Bowman. Is Marcy here?
Yeah.
Oh. Oh, okay. It's up to you, Marcy.
Hello, I think you all received my email, so I, I won't go over all of my points, but it was very factual. And it, I drew from the Commissioner handbook, all the various guidelines and rules, and it went through, I think I listed five or six of them, where Mr. Starkweather had violated those guidelines. Uh, in terms of Mr. Starkweather not being here and the time difference and all that, I just was texted from someone, I didn't personally observe it, but he's apparently communicating online, on the internet, so he does have internet access wherever he is. He's able to, I think, I guess, a post on Facebook or whatever. I also think Mr. Starkweather not being here is ably represented by council, councilwoman rule. She's, she should have gone to law school because she's being a great defense attorney. Likewise, Souza, uh, councilwoman Francina, you are doing a great job advocating for Mr. Starkweather. I don't think he's going unrepresented here at all. He had notice. I don't think due process is an issue, according to our city attorney, Matthew Summers. And then to address, I, I could see where you were going, councilwoman rule with questioning about how much staff time has been used or whatever. I will say that I noticed when I, I looked at all of Mr. Starkweather's emails to city staff, and I think five of them, he CC'd Matthew Summers, who I believe would be required to open up that email and read that email, and, uh, you know, attorneys, the clock starts ticking when they start reading emails or whatever from their clients. I don't know if he responded to any of those emails, that would be additional time, too. So, um, uh.
Could you, let me ask, what were the, I'm trying to find your letter to the, your, what were the things that he?
The five, the five.
What are the five things?
All right, hold, hold, oye, 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 um.
Okay. In the commission handbook?
Yeah. Uh, here we go. Okay, number one, "Committee members must not represent their own views or recommendations as those of the commission unless the majority of the body has officially voted to approve such action." I don't know, Commissioner Quilisi, if Mr. Starkweather ever brought up any of the things he wanted to lobby on behalf of the Planning Commission, if he brought it up at your Planning Commission meetings. Number two, "Commissioners should establish a good working relationship with fellow commission members, the city council, and staff liaison." Well, I think that's been discussed in terms of the harassing emails, demanding emails that he sent to staff. "The primary responsibilities of each commission is to advise and make recommendations to city council." I don't think Mr. Starkweather has stood up here and, and advocated to you what should be done with things involving the Planning Commission, so I'm not aware of that. He, he did a workaround where he went through staff to try to get to lobby staff to lobby city council. Fifth one.
Nothing there.
Yada, yada, yada.
Thank you, Marcy. Uh, next we have Jody Kaler, then Barbara Bowman, then David Byrne.
I have similar comments, that the Planning Commissioner is entrusted to understand the roles and responsibilities of the commission on which he serves, and there's been talk of how that's not always been the case in his actions. His role is not as a visionary policymaker, as we just learned. According to the city of Ojai's description, the stated role is acting in an advisory capacity to make future, to make sure future developments are congruous, and that the vision of the city council and the community is realized. Again, it's been said, he's not to direct staff to initiate major projects, and apparently he has repeatedly. And the August email that's been referenced a few times, with prejudice, with plotting and saying straight out that he has a group of people with the same agenda that is ready to carry out that agenda, and that city council had not even been elected yet. So I think it's very easy in politics, when there's any political action taken, to say it's political, or it's personal, or it's a witch hunt. But there's also the dispassionate equation of actions and accountability for words, for deeds. And that is important and essential in a civil society. Act with impunity and lose your immunity. Abuse your job and lose your job. It's not a passionate thing. It is an equation, and it's a matter of fact. If that's how you see that he has behaved, your decision is clear. Thank you.
I have a question of the speaker.
Thank you, Jody.
Have you watched the Planning Commission meetings?
I have not.
You've never watched a Planning Commission meeting?
I have not.
But you've come to these conclusions. Thank you.
I, let's, uh.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you. And I would just make a, let's please be respectful to our speakers.
I am respectful, but I, I want to know from every speaker if they've watched the Planning Commission meetings. That's a fair question.
But that's not the only source for information.
That's true.
Uh, next we have Barbara Bowman, then David Byrne, and then Vicky Carlton Burn.
Yes, I have watched the Planning Commission meetings, and yes, I do go to a lot of meetings, including the historical, and so I have a very good idea how this whole system works. A planning commissioner's role is an advisory one, in which commissioners bring their professional background into the knowledge mix and evaluation of projects coming before the Ojai City Council. By reviewing the merits of each project in ways to further improve an applicant submission, they help the city council decide on each project, based on its worth as a positive addition to the city. The idea of appointing a commissioner based on their foregone prejudices, being in alignment with ideological prejudices of members of the city council, negates the entire purpose of an independent democratic process. As the current majority city council tightens its grip on the elimination of independent thought and strangles any possibility of alternative means to provide affordable housing and business opportunities or housing for the on-housed, we are left with an authoritarian rule who rules with three to two vote on any and all issues regarding any development within Ojai. The use of information requests as a reason to have an active commissioner replaced sounds a lot like Benghazi-y slander. To say that two women candidates running for council seats had weak backgrounds in government work was a truth, not an insult. An insult from a real misogynist would have been the way Whitman addressed rule in Francina at a closed session. That was misogynist. And the truth is, now we do have a reason to ask someone to leave, and it would not be Jeffrey Starkweather. He never addressed anybody. He has worked with you continually, Rachel. He's been kind, he's given you information, he works with you, he works with you, Leslie. I mean, he is one of the kindest people I know. To insinuate that this man is misogynist in any way is such a far stretch of the imagination. I just can't, I can't even believe you would pull that one out of the hat.
Thank you, Barbara. Next we have David Byrne, then Vicky Carlton Burn, and then Nora Harold.
Good evening, council. My name is David Byrne. I've lived in the valley for about 32 years. I'd first like to thank all of you for what you do, because your Tuesday nights are a little different than they were a little while back. I don't know Jeffrey Starkweather. I've sparred with him a few times on Facebook and didn't like what I saw, so I went to some more, hopefully, objective sources. And I'd just like to read a headline that came from the last city he lived in before this, Pittsboro, North Carolina. And this is from the Chatham Journal Newspaper. It says, "As predicted, Jeff Starkweather's Chatham Forward Political Action Committee will stretch the truth to win." This is one headline. This is just an anecdote, I realize that. But there were many, many other, um, sources online that were very consistent with this. This is not a court of law, and Starkweather's removal is not going to be a financial burden to him. It's not going to take away his freedoms, it's not going to imprison him in any way. Your decision must be for what is best for the city, not for Mr. Starkweather. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Uh, next we have Vicky Carlton Burn, then Nora Harold, and then Len Clafe.
Good evening. It's clear that Mr. Starkweather has a propensity to color outside the lines. His incessant unauthorized demands on city staff are well documented and mentioned in numerous emails to city council members already today, so I'm not going to duplicate them. However, I will add that he was reprimanded by the North Carolina State Bar for professional misconduct. He has demonstrated either his ignorance or complete disregard of the Brown Act law by seeking to disclose the contents of the mid-memo publicly, of all things, during the Brown Act workshop. Not only is it a Brown Act violation to disclose the contents of that memo, disclosure was and is a violation of attorney-client privilege. As a former attorney, he must certainly have known, been aware of that. The aforementioned items are not conjecture, gossip, or speculation, they're a matter of record. He's abused the public trust with his actions. Mr. Starkweather serves at the pleasure of the city council. It's within your power to remove him from office with or without cause. If you, as city council members, lack confidence in Mr. Starkweather's ability to carry out his duties and responsibility, and responsibilities with integrity, adherence to the law, and in the best interests of the residents of the city, that alone is reason to remove him from the Planning Commission. Mr. Starkweather's absence is unfortunate, however, since this is not a legal proceeding, his attendance is not mandatory. Postponing this decision will only take more time and energy away from high priority city business. I urge you to act without delay.
Thank you, Vicky. Uh, next we have Nora Harold, then Len Clafe, then Tara Jeffrey.
Mayor Sticks, council members, oh, James left, Matthew, thank you all so much. Thank you for your service. It's much easier to fall into misogyny than it is to act to resolve the crisis unfolding in Ojai and everywhere. There seems to be a faction in Ojai that believes if we bring more money into our valley via development, building, SDRs, and more tourism, this will solve what has long been broken. This mostly benefits a smaller group as opposed to the community as a whole. This, in my opinion, is just another version of trickle-down economics, a policy that has had disastrous consequences for most of us, and has contributed to the widening of the wealth gap, and more and more of us falling beneath the poverty line. We need leadership and a planning commission that are willing to take the seemingly brave and bold steps of turning towards those most in need in our community and creating structures, literally and figuratively, that will support them. Jeffrey Starkweather was appointed by elected officials who are no longer in office, and therefore, in my opinion, is not currently in alignment with the will of the voters. Due to this, along with the use of misogyny in campaign ads and emails, along with what appears to be a power grab and attention-seeking behavior, I support his removal from the Planning Commission. I ask that the council appoint someone with the appropriate qualifications, who also shows a willingness to support the creation of policies and a community that tends to everyone in Ojai across the economic spectrum, along with asking the council themselves to continue to put your attention here as well. Until we are all cared for, none of us are truly cared for. Thank you.
Thank you, Nora.
I have a, if I could, I, I agree with you. Until all of us are cared for, none of us are cared for, and I find that to be an inclusive statement, not an exclusive statement. I just wanted to point out that as Mr. Quilisi, head of the Planning Commission, pointed out, they are not regu, they do not make the laws. So they simply follow them. And if you look at the Planning Commission meetings, you will see that it's generally a 5-0 vote. So they are, they are, and I, I suggest that people do look at them. They follow the law, and he was very, very correct and clear in saying.
Let's make sure, though, that we're still on public comment, not in discussion.
No, I understand that. Thank you, Mayor. I'm gonna finish, you don't need to interrupt me.
Leslie, I don't need you to lecture me.
I'm just telling you.
No, I don't need a lecture.
Okay, all right.
And I still have 45 seconds.
So go for it.
So I'm gonna say this. Jeffrey Starkweather stepped into this community and created this bullshit. He did this. He is the divisive element. He pitted you all against one another, and we, as a community, are suffering as a result. I'm suffering. I'm sad. I'm sad that this is where we're at. We need healing. And Jeffrey Starkweather and his actions as president of the Ojai Valley Democratic Club, in creating a slate of candidates and the misogynistic attacks against Mayor Sticks, continue to reverberate today, tonight. I saw it here. It's not okay. He needs to go. He needs to go for that alone. He is compromised. He is conflicted. He has his hands in too many pies. He needs to go.
Thank you, Nora. Uh, next we have Len Clafe, then Tara Jeffrey, then Renee Roth.
Leonard, Leonard Clafe, I live in Ojai. I think that I can safely say that there are very few people in the city of Ojai who have attended more council and commission meetings over the past 30 years than I have. I, I am aghast, I've been aghast at meetings up till now, and tonight is just the coup de grace of insanity. That Jeffrey Starkweather is Superman and is responsible for this division is, I, I can't wrap my head around it. Mayor Sticks, you started your remarks by talking about the staff report attached to this agenda item. There was no staff report, there was your letter. That was the entirety of it. City Attorney Summers, I very rarely, I, I never disagree with you on municipal law and probably a whole other vast areas of law. Due process, I'm gonna disagree with you. I, if he has, if Jeff has any kind of due process right, it was not met by, by noticing a meeting when he's out of the country. That's my opinion. I could be wrong, but I vigorously disagree with you. There's been a whole lot of discussion about whether or not, not even whether or not, there's been a whole lot of accusations that Jeff is misogynistic or sexist, and the only specific item that I've heard is that he referred to women, several of the candidates were women as weak candidates. I find that, I, I, I have a tough time considering that misogynistic. They're all weak candidates. There are strong candidates. He wasn't talking about physical prowess. Madam Mayor, he was not talking about physical prowess, he was talking about his opinion as to the strength of the candidate. That's not misogyny. And if that's the only instance of misogyny that you can come up with, that's weak as an argument. Somebody quoted a newspaper as proof of something. I mean, I could quote Fox News and all sorts of news. I mean, I could quote Fox News and all sorts of newses for all sorts of nonsense, so that doesn't mean anything. And if anything, all the other accusations that are made tonight are reasons that Jeff should have the opportunity to be here and be heard. And he doesn't have that by Zoom at 2:00 in the morning. I'm sorry. And if you want to talk about misogyny, I was here two weeks ago or four weeks ago when one council member, the only male on the council, referred to one of the female council members as stupid. Or made that insinuation. Yes, you did.
Don't lie.
Yes, you did. I'm not lying. That was the clear, that was the clear insinuation of your remarks. Jeff has a right to be heard. Forget due process. Human beings. We are human beings here. We should treat each other with decency, and that means if you're going to accuse somebody of something, you give them a real, not a Zoom, but a real opportunity to respond. Thank you.
Thank you, Len. Okay.
I want to make clear, clarify, I believe, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe you said that I usually don't understand what's being said.
I didn't say that.
What did you say? What did, what did you say?
Excuse me, could we have quiet?
What did you say? What did you-
You said, "I don't understand." And I said, "That's usually what you say to me." I mean-
No, you said, "You usually don't." It's on tape.
Okay, "You usually don't."
That's right. And that implies that I'm stupid.
That wasn't my intention, but if you want to take it, if you want to-
Counsel, counsel, excuse me. Let's have some decorum and continue.
I have a point of privilege. I would like to ask Andy, Councilman Whitman, what did you mean when you said that? What was your intent when you said that?
I believe that Souza frequently says she doesn't understand something when she doesn't like it.
So you were-
Frequently.
Okay, so you were really-
Like regularly.
So you were implying that she was misleading in her statement that she didn't understand?
I did, I did.
I just want to understand where you were coming from, because it's important to know.
I've told you what I said.
Okay, let's keep going. Next, we have Tara Jeffrey, then Renee Roth, and then Sue Williamson.
Thank you all.
Let's have a quiet.
Thank you. And James, you're the epitome of diplomacy. Thank you so much. I appreciate you guys being on the council, and I'm here to request Mr. Starkweather's removal. During this time, he's been on vacation. That should not be a deterrent. He's been all over social media at all times of the day and night. So he's become, let's see, his manipulation of the election by way of crafting a slate of candidates before it was acceptable to do so, and the misogynistic statements referencing two female candidates are egregious and alarming. I kind of liken this to our former president referring to female body parts in a manner that should have ended Mr. Trump's candidacy, but unfortunately, it was spun as locker room talk and behavior normalized. I see the same thing in our paper this afternoon and on social media defending Mr. Starkweather's references to weak female candidates. It is disheartening and puzzling that people want to pretend that words uttered to an email list of supporters or while being recorded without your knowledge could somehow not be the truth. Additionally, Mr. Starkweather complains about city resources being abused while he hypocritically wastes taxpayer money with 140 demands of staff time in a nine-month period, far overreaching his duties as planning commissioner. He was warned in February of this year about his abuse of staff time, but the behavior did not stop, illustrating a lack of impulse control and disregard for others. This is particularly disturbing because it has been over a long period of time, and these are not isolated incidents. This pattern of abusing staff time and mixing his vast involvement in other groups with city business is inappropriate for his role on the commission. He forgot that serving on the planning commission is to support council. Instead, he regularly creates adversarial environment, which makes him unfit to continue serving on this commission. City staff are not his personal errand boy or secretaries. We are in a very dangerous time in this country and our town. Outrageous lying, gaslighting, bullying, racism, misogyny, misinformation, and intimidation have been normalized as part of our daily discourse. We are becoming woefully desensitized to all of it, and I believe it would be our undoing if we stay on this delusional track. You have an opportunity, and I will venture to say a duty, to say no to this pernicious dysfunction. Thank you.
Thank you, Tara.
I have a question, Mayor. Tara, you made the statement that he's been all over social media at all hours of the day and night.
Yes.
To the best of my knowledge, he's not been on social media at all since Thursday.
That's what I've seen, so.
I have not seen that. He's told me that he's not on social media. They're traveling. I just, I know you want to be factual.
Yeah, I do.
And I believe you made a statement that was not true.
Okay, it is true in my experience, so that's all.
Well, then I'd like you to, your experience doesn't matter. It's a fact. Is it a fact?
Okay. I'm not going to argue with you on the podium. We can talk about this in person.
Could you please refrain from interrogating these speakers? Could you please stop that? Because we need to create an environment where people are welcome to speak, and if you interrogate them when they're at the podium, people aren't going to want to speak. Okay. Next, we have Renee Roth, then Sue Williamson, then Larry Steingold.
A point of privilege, please. Mayor, I'm just going to ask you, we really do not need you to lecture us on behavior. And so I really wish you would stop. I think this is a third, fourth, fifth time.
Well, my job is to run an efficient meeting, so if the behavior is not helpful for an efficient meeting, I'm going to address that. Thank you. Renee Roth, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the council, you know, I want to quote something from you, Betsy, because you're really, really good at coming up with statements that you don't live up to yourself. Such a statement, and this is a quote from your kindness page of your Betsy Sticks for Mayor website, "Approaching every situation with kindness, compassion, and mutual respect is crucial. As mayor, I bring an open mind and active listening to my work. If we want a more civil community, then we ourselves must model civility." I would like to say, Betsy, that this is a disgraceful example of you modeling civility and how you treat members of our commissions and our community. This is disgraceful, that people are here acting as if this is a witch hunt and we've got to take him down. This person has served the Ojai community on the planning commission for, I don't know, a year. I've attended meetings. I've gotten lots of emails from him. He doesn't expect a response most of the time. Most of the time, he's educating me because I knew nothing about housing. I know I didn't really care about housing. And Nora Harold, I would like to correct you. Jeffrey Starkweather is more supportive of creating ways to bring housing, affordable housing, and lower the income gap that is present than any public person I've ever seen spa, speak in our town about housing. Okay, so back to my comments. Sorry, but I must really be missing something here, Betsy. As an example of your good governance that you do talk about very often, examples of good governance, this is also not an example of good governance. So if you were to show us how good governance works, you would have had a meeting with Mr. Starkweather. You would have said, "I'm very interested in what your comments are and what you would like to see on the agenda. Please summarize them, and let's have a discussion. And please bring it to the planning commission so they can also summarize and get a discussion going." You don't have to be the arbitrator of who is right and wrong at the podium. This is taking Facebook and social media to an extreme and normalizing this kind of behavior, and it is wrong. And you must stop. I would also like to hear from Rachel Lang, who's interacted with Mr. Starkweather on the planning commission.
Thank you, Renee.
And hear her opinion and her comments.
Thank you, Renee. Next, we have Sue Williamson, then Larry Steingold, then Christine Spazato. Spazato.
Well, I'll try to bring it down a notch. I support the removal effective immediately of Jeffrey Starkweather due to his excessive and inappropriate behavior as a member of the planning commission. And I don't think it should be postponed to waste more time on yet another drama going on here. He has already wasted enough of the city manager's time, as far as I can see. And besides that, he was not appointed by any person on the city council. To that point, the current ordinances regulating the appointments to city commissions is contradictory. The planning commission ordinance clearly states that each council member shall appoint a planning commissioner, yet only Souza's appointment is on the commission. This is due to having staggered terms, which in effect allows council members to retain influence beyond their elected position. The Historic Preservation Commission and the Arts Commission are also examples of this, going into great detail to explain their staggered appointments. The Parks and Rec Commission appointments are not relegated at all, except the youth appointment. So it seems to me that there should be consistency in regards to these appointments, and they should reflect the will of the Ojai residents who voted for their city council members. Therefore, each council member should be allowed to appoint a commissioner, of course, following the procedure as stated in the ordinance. Their terms should run concurrently with each council member's term of office. This would be the most democratic way of handling commissioners' appointments and would certainly simplify matters. And people can say, "Oh, it's not a political, it's..." The fact is, it's all political. That's what we're here doing. We're doing politics, and the commission is political, and everything is political. And these people were, you all were elected, and you all should have the opportunity, as the ordinance says, to appoint your person on the commissions. Period. And I don't know who concocted this situation where these terms were not congruent with the city council. It makes no sense. So I really think that's what needs to be addressed here. But I also think Jeffrey should go. He's obviously causing too many trouble.
Thank you, Sue. Next, we have Larry Steingold, then Christine Spazato, and then Mary Maderas.
Hello. I met Jeffrey three years ago. He and I agree on practically nothing, okay? We're on probably both ends of the spectrum for a variety of reasons. But he is one of the smartest people I know regarding affordable housing, so maybe that's why you want to get rid of him. Because for 12 years, the city has built nothing. So let's get rid of all the people who have knowledge. Hey, what the hell, why not? For all those who think he's a misogynist, and I'm not defending him one way or the other, maybe they should look under the word "machandrist," right? Which is the opposite of misogynist. And those people who say that, maybe they are. So we won't discuss that. But the point is, that flag, the one that we all saluted, and I know people back here snicker, "Well, we just had Memorial Day, and then we had July 4th, and then we're probably ramping up for another one," okay? Are defending that flag and the right to be, to defend themselves in open court or open law. And you're a defense attorney, and how many times would you have your defendant get convicted when he's not around? Okay? Does that happen? Approve the body, right? Who's the defendant? He's got to be, can he defend himself? Can he speak in front? So at least have the courage to push this down the road, to have him here. Because this is disgusting, because it could happen to you, it could happen to Weston, it could happen to me, it could happen to anybody. You're convicted, you're not here. You can't even show up. Yeah, I know, it's all legal, we can do it on Zoom, and it's the same thing. Okay? I mean, this is disgusting, okay? And I feel like taking a shower. Thank you.
Thank you, Larry. Next, we have Christine Spazato, then Mary Maderas, and then Katie Donwin.
Hello, everyone. Good evening. I'm very scared. This is a very scary room, I have to say. I mean, I'm kind of joking, but I'm kind of not joking. Wow. You know, I became aware of this situation recently, and I felt like it would be an interesting opportunity to come and just speak my piece and share my opinion from the information that I know of. You know, so I wrote something, and I would like to share it. But I have to say that there has to be a way to find some peace, to be kind. And I'm not just referring to the people up here, I'm referring to everybody in this room. I was just outside in this alcove for the last, I don't know, two hours, facing a lot of angry men. I think the word misogyny just like screws with men's heads or something. It's a real thing, you know? It's a real thing. And I'm sorry, but in his own words, in his email, he said, "Weak, young, female candidates." He didn't say weak candidates, he didn't say weak, young candidates, he didn't say new candidates. He said, "Weak, young, female candidates." Okay? That's a very demeaning and harmful statement to make about women. And what I think most men don't understand is when a man can make a statement like that, there's something to it. There's something under it, underneath it. It's not respectful, it's not kind. You know, there's a movie, and I forget the name of it right now, but it's all about Shangri-La and how, and I heard how that movie somehow was filmed in Ojai, or it's been related to Ojai. And in the movie, H.B. Warner says, "The only thing that's important, there's no rules, there's no regulations, there's no laws. The only thing that's important is to be kind. Be kind. Be kind to each other. Please." I mean, I'm so shaken up by this meeting, really. I don't think I'll ever come back. And actually, I feel like I want to leave Ojai. My wife, Mary, and I have been here for eight years, and we came because we loved it. We heard wonderful things about Ojai. And now, I don't know. I don't know what's going on, but I'm very, very shocked and disappointed. And I just want to say that, forget about everything I wrote, because there's no time, but I want to thank Mayor Betsy for being courageous and bringing this to the forefront. And I'm really sick of hearing, like, all of these horrible things about you, Betsy, because I think you're a really good mayor, and I think you are honest, and I think you are kind, and I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you, Christine. Next, we have Mary Maderas, then Katie Donwin, and then LaShel Bourier. Bourier?
Hi, everyone. I'm glad I'm coming after that. Christine said a lot of what has been really upsetting me tonight, too. There were two people tonight who talked about peace. And I know this is getting off of what the agenda is or the item is, but I'll just say, I support the flagging of Jeffrey Starkweather's, what seems to be inappropriate use of his position. I support that. Whoever brought this to the forefront, thank you, whether it was you, I don't care who it was. And please don't argue about it. You know, sending, you know, I'm going to say the things that have been said already, but I'm going to say it again because there are probably people online listening who didn't read the things that I read, and please don't ask me what I read, okay? Sending his policy concerns to staff members instead of, you hear how upset we've been? Do you realize what this, what happens here when you all argue? And interrupt and question people like me to come up here, that come up here with concerns because I gave up a whole evening of work to be here because of what I found out when I read and researched what this guy's been doing? Okay? It's not okay. So recruiting candidates, okay, that he picked outside of the process of Ojai Democratic Club, which is supposed to vote on candidates. Okay, that's concerning to me, okay? In addition to his reference, that we're going to hear over and over again, the term, his opposing candidates being weak, young, female opponents. I'm sorry, everybody, but I think that is very concerning. It was concerning when Trump said it, and he got away with it. Sending his policy concerns to staff members instead of sending those concerns to the city council. And I hope that you're all concerned about that. And if you're not, that makes me want to leave Ojai, too, okay? This feels like a microcosm of what is wrong with our government in the country on a larger scale. I have listened to these meetings. I've listened at home, and I'm appalled at the arguing and named, and the throwing names at each other and interrupting each other when we're all here to help you. and interrupting each other, when we're all here to help you help us, okay? That's why we're here. We're not here because we want to argue. And I certainly don't want to listen to things that each of you said to each other, discuss it behind closed doors, and figure it out. It's really embarrassing. I'm embarrassed by this. And so I want to end with, there's a sign out there, I had enough time waiting hours to read it, "The City of Ojai Values." Maybe you all need to read it again. "We will accept responsibility for our decisions and our actions." Doesn't that hold true for Mr. Starkweather, by the way? Whether he did it once, twice, 10 times, stopped, then continued. If he did these things, it should be really concerning. They're wrong, and I don't trust it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary. Next, we have Katie Donwin, then LaShelle Bourier, and then Anita Cram.
Hi, good evening, or good night, I guess. It's getting kind of late. I'm Katie Donwin, and I'm here speaking on behalf of myself. I've gone back and forth quite a bit on what I wanted to say tonight, because I have a lot of feelings. And surprisingly, what almost disturbs me more is that any communications that have gone out specifically during the campaign time was almost a year ago now. And we know that at least one person on council had access to that information, and who knows how many others. So approaching this issue from the perspective of feminism, I feel like, if that was truly the case, would have been done almost a year ago, when these emails were first available. If there's any other reasoning right now to consider reevaluating the commission, then that can be based on what is happening now. But if we're looking at how many people have been riled up, rightfully so, right? Those words could potentially be strong words for a lot of people. But if that's the case, again, it could have been addressed a long time ago. If we're talking about misogyny in our community, or if we're talking about feminism and wanting to lift each other up, these things could have been addressed a very long time ago. And one of the first things that popped up into my mind was that this seems like a very convenient time for this information to be available to the general public when this discussion of reshaping or addressing the appointments of commissioners has come up. I have no opinion whatsoever on what you, as a council, want to decide to do about that. But I just really think that we also need to remember, as a community, that all of these people up here are public servants and are responsible to us and what we want to see for our city. And we don't want to continue to see personal vendettas pushed out towards the community that do continue to divide us. And we can continue to make... Because let's not pretend, like, the groups, these competing factions are, one is more benevolent than the other, okay? Everyone is causing this same friction. So let's not pretend like one is better than another, and let's really sit back and think about what's most important for this community and what we really want to see and what's important, because it's 9 o'clock at night, and we've addressed two items.
Thank you, Katie. Next, we have LaShelle Bourier, then Anita Cram, and then Steve Quilisi.
Bring this up here. Can you hear me? There we go. Hello, my name is LaShelle Bouvier, like Jackie. Before she was a Kennedy, or Marge Simpson, if you know that one. Before she married Homer, she was a Bouvier. I do watch the Planning Commission meetings. I watch all of them. I've seen every single one since they started recording them. They're fascinating to me. I love this town. I love the architecture. I love it so much that I went to school, to a university, to get my degree in drafting and printmaking, and that's what I do now. I am a lady draftsman, I guess. Most girls, I guess, watch True Crime and Housewives. I watch Planning Commission meetings and read Building Codes. A little strange, but I'm from Ojai, born and raised. So with that said, I am a resident. I added that, because you guys asked if we watched the meetings. I do. I am born and raised in Ojai. I have my children here. I'm speaking to let everyone know that, you can't see this in the screens, but there is an entire room of people here, and everything that they're saying and doing. You should come down here, everyone, and be a part of this. But also, you guys should know that everyone is watching, and we watch on our phones. We cast it to our TVs. My girlfriends come over and have cocktails or wine. We watch it like we're watching a series. My husband makes fun of us. He's like, "What happened on episode five?" You know? So we're watching this. I don't have Twitter, I don't have Facebook. I don't post on Nextdoor, and neither do my friends. But we're all talking about it, and we're all watching it. So more people are seeing this and talking about it than I think people realize. So I want that to be known. Kind of moved around, because you didn't know what I wanted to say. In conclusion, you don't have to be sitting in this room to be watching this. Just so you guys know, people are watching. I also want to make it known that my application is in for Planning Commission. It was turned in last year. So just, I know you said that there wasn't people, there was back and forth. You were saying there were, there were other applications turned in. It's there. And then Councilmember Whitman, you were saying that you wanted to see, you wanted professionals, that the commission needed to be professionals, and you didn't think that we have them. Well, I'm a little bit concerned that, whatever the standards are, if we raise them, I unfortunately will be a weaker, younger, female candidate for the commission seat. And I know that, because that will be true. I will be younger, I will be weaker, and I will be a female, compared to older men with more certifications and degrees in the field. So I will be out. So I just want to make sure that you look at my application, and if there's something that I'm missing, or I can do to become a stronger contender, I would love to hear that. So just so that said. Because I would love to serve the city of Ojai and preserve the architecture in this town. I love this stuff. Thank you very much, everyone. And thank you, Chair Quilisi, for everything you do on the Planning Commission.
Thank you, LaShelle. Next, we have Anita Cram, then Steve Quilisi, then Teal Rowe.
Good evening. I'm going to quote directly from the infamous August 10th, 2022 email, I guess, or whatever year it was. So Starkweather said, Mr. Starkweather said, "The last three days getting candidate questionnaire out for the Dem Club and frantically recruiting candidates to fill our slate." I think we have it now, end quote. The email goes on to say that was Renee Roth, Leslie Rule, Randy Haney, and Anson Wilson. Williams, I guess. So about the school district candidate, it said, "Recruited by fellow evangelical church member here." I'm very concerned that evangelical church is brought up in the city government process and is a component of candidate selection. Open quote, "Randy Haney and Leslie Rule have both weak, young, female opponents," end quote. Open quote. So there is a chance we will have a majority trustee board and city council we can work with. And while, and whole, there was a typo in his end, "we'll need other policy expertise and input." Bill's idea of expert panels works well here. This sounds like a shadow government, that they were, you know, had their people... I'm saying this as I don't know for fact, but it sounds like they were going to get their people in, they were going to develop expert panels and guide the city council. Shadow government is how it rings to me. Open quote, "I agree we need to go into a hiatus until after the election." So whatever that means, maybe, you know, need to go undercover. There's no place for this in our city government. And these are very concerning, disturbing, you know? I haven't even read the emails that badgered city manager. But to me, this email alone is disturbing. Going into 2024, what are they planning for that? You know, how are they gonna, you know? I think that I stand in solidarity with the mayor on her issue tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Anita. Next, we have Steve Quilisi, then Teal Rowe, then Elizabeth Herring.
Thank you, Mayor, council members, and staff. I have not read all of the emails that Jeffrey Starkweather has written, but I can testify that I probably read, I have probably received a couple hundred. Like many, I read part of it and I stop, or I decide not to read it, or I read all the way through it and think one way or another about it. The emails that I have gotten from Jeffrey have not said, "I am a planning commissioner, and as a planning commissioner, I think the policy should be XYZ." I don't know the tone of the emails that James Vega received, but if any of them were of the tone, "I'm a planning commissioner, and this is what I think the policy should be," then that would be unacceptable. Because all of us on the Planning Commission understand what our jobs are, independent of our political views, and independent of the fact that we would like to influence city policy, one way or another, but not as planning commissioners, as private citizens. And to the extent that we use what I think are probably the utterings of a private citizen, or the utterings of the head of the Democratic Club, and conflating those with the utterings of a planning commissioner, I think we're making a big mistake here. I don't believe that in any Planning Commission meeting that I have attended, and it's all of them in the last year that Jeffrey's been here, I have not heard him do anything but advocate for housing. And housing is a part of the portfolio, if you will, of the Planning Commission. But I have not heard him advocate in any way, any political position that is inconsistent with following the municipal code. If there are examples of that, I would like to hear about it. I have one particular thing that I heard here in a city council meeting, where his qualification to be on the Planning Commission was questioned because he's an attorney. He, in fact, is an attorney who's served on Planning Commissions in the past. And if being an attorney is a disqualification for being on the Planning Commission, then I think we have a lot of thinking to do about being an attorney being a qualification for other things. I don't know. But I think you need to go back and look at these communications and say, were they from a Planning Commissioner, or were they from a private citizen who ought to be able to express any opinion on any political topic at any time? Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Next, we have Teal Rowe, then Elizabeth Herring. Can I finish my... Yeah, but I'm talking. Can you wait just a second? And then Gotum Barua. As soon as I finish talking, you can talk.
Do you, we're not clear how long Jeffrey's been a Planning Commissioner. Would you say a year?
I would say it's about a year, because Jeffrey and Judy Murphy replaced...
Ray Powers?
No, Ray Powers left before that.
Kathy Lattes.
Kathy Lattes was not reappointed. Judy Murphy was appointed in her place. I don't remember which...
Kathy Nolan.
Kathy Nolan retired, and Jeffrey Starkweather was appointed to replace her.
Mayor and council, Mr. Starkweather was appointed on June 14th, 2022, the same time as Ms. Murphy was appointed, also June 14th, 2022.
So about a year is correct.
About one email a day.
Okay, next, we have Teal Rowe, then Elizabeth Herring, and then Gotum Barua.
Thank you all for your service, and I request that please don't ask me any questions, and you can call me anytime if you have any questions. This is not a court of law, and this is not a conviction. This is a job that was given to this person, and I am 100% behind the mayor in having it taken away. I have watched many Planning Commissions, not that it's my gig, just as I've watched almost every city council meeting since Mayor Stix has been in the seat. I'm trying to figure out what's going on here. And in that email dated August 10th from Starkweather, there's an agenda in place. No wonder I'm like a dog sniffing the past to figure out what's going on, man. And I am with Anita Cram on this shadow government, and you know what? We're going to figure it out, and I will tell you. I'm a Ventura County resident, and I know that the people of Ojai will not back down on this. And I'm with Marcy Toshur on the facts. They're in your letter. And I'm also 100% with the eloquence that Mary Spozato illustrated about misogyny. This is incredible, and this is the city council, and it's not my gig, and I'm going to keep watching the meetings. In the Planning Commission meeting, I think it was the most recent, the staff, I wish I could, I think it's 1 minute 54, 1 hour 54 minutes, the staff, over and over, tells Jeffrey Starkweather, "You are not here to create policy. You're working for the city council." That's one that is just in my head tonight, based on other people's comments. The others that I watched, the vibe of the meeting is somebody sitting in a seat like a thoroughbred with an agenda to win something. And this is a council. This is a council in Ojai. And I believe that we all will support you. And I've said, almost every city council meeting I speak at, I say that. The people of Ojai will support you.
Thank you, Teal. Next, we have Elizabeth Herring, then Gotum, Gotum, sorry, Gotum Barua. How can I do that every... Gotum Barua, and then Jill Dolan.
Hi, council members. My name is Elizabeth, and I'm from Ojai. The words used in Jeffrey's email were specifically "weak, young, female opponents." As a young female, I find these words deeply offensive, but sadly unsurprising. As someone who grew up here, I've seen all kinds of misogyny in this town, in different high schools, in the streets, in homes, et cetera. I have also seen how people who move to Ojai are sometimes surprised by the prevalence of misogynistic culture here. That happens all the time. And I'm happy that this conversation is happening in the public sphere, because it's far past the time that the community addresses violence against women, verbal and otherwise, especially in our city government. And I think Jeffrey Starkweather should be held accountable for his demeaning language. Thank you.
Thank you, Elizabeth. Gotum, I got it. Gotum Barua, and then Jill Dolan, and then Stuart Griffith.
Thank you, Mayor Stix, and thank you, council members, for the opportunity to speak. So I'm going to share three perspectives, if I can do this in the three minutes. So I came to Ojai, moved here full-time in 2020, having spent the previous 20 years in much less politically diverse places, specifically San Francisco and New York. And one of the things that's really struck me is that in the kind of overall cultural dynamic and political dynamic we're living in as a country, people I've talked to across the political spectrum have all sort of expressed a lot of desire over anything else, to just get past all this stuff and get into a better place, where we can actually focus on the things that are important. And I think that's really important, in the context of this, that if we have a situation where things are going sideways so quickly over comments, what is that doing as far as the important work of this council? Or how many other agenda items, how many priorities are falling behind because we can't address this issue? I think with regard to the question of what people are saying, I think about the reason I got connected to Ojai in the first place. I started getting involved in the community in 2011. I have a goddaughter with a single mother who lives here in town, and she called me up a couple months ago, and she said... and she called me up a couple of months ago, and she said, "I need your help." I said, "What's that?" She goes, "I need your help to convince Momma to get me an iPhone." I said, "Why do you want an iPhone?" She said, "Everybody has an iPhone." She's in sixth grade. I said, and so, playing back to her, what she has told me, I said, "And does everybody else want to be a mother and a teacher and a green entrepreneur who creates a green Amazon, puts, as you call him, Beth Jezos out of business, becomes a billionaire, and then President of the United States?" And she said, "I gotta go." And that's the last time she has asked me about that. What I think broke my heart is she, all, she was very outspoken, and what broke my heart is that the kids in her class have been referring to her as Karen for being so outspoken. This stuff cuts really, really deeply, and it's tragic to see what, what plays out, that these, these kinds of conversations, we can, we can sort of blubiate and can say misandry, misogyny, all these different things. These things cut really deeply, and the examples we're seeing affect children in deep, deep ways, on both sides. And so I think we need to keep aware of that as we think about, words do hurt, much as people like to wave it off. They do hurt, they do impact, and I think there's so much we could lose. I think, lastly, having been a California state official, having been on the board of the California Democratic Party, seeing politics and policy, there's a lot of blurring, and it's hard to completely separate official capacities from personal and political capacities. And the reality is, the other side won, and Jeffrey didn't find time. I've done this in Europe. I, I found time if it's important to participate. He didn't have time. His side lost, and he has to abide by the results of a fair and free election. Thank you.
Thank you, Gotum. Next, we have Jill Dolan, then Stuart Griffith.
Hello again. This has been a really interesting meeting, and I'm, I'm really happy to have sat through and listened to so many people speak about the things that kind of bug them and the things that bug me, and make us think that, I mean, I don't think that any commission should be politicized. I, I mean, anyway, that, but I don't think that's what we're talking about tonight. And I don't watch the Planning Commission meeting, but I, like many other people in this room, have had email correspondence with Jeffrey, and, and I don't always agree with him, most of the time, actually. And, and he posts stuff, and we all know that. And I, I want to read, this is from, I believe it was the February 17th of this year, 2023. He and I had been talking, we ran into each other at the museum, and then we, anyway. He said, "We need, we have an, we, we were talking about parking, and he has, we have plenty of empty lots in where affordable housing can and should be built." We had been specifically referring to a piece of private property that he thinks we can just park in. Anyway, "We need rental multifamily apartment, both all affordable and mixed income." Also, he wrote, "I have canvassed the entire city, and we have plenty of extremely old and rundown housing near downtown. A small-scale affordable builder could tear them down and build a number of affordable apartments where one or two houses are located. Without additional supply, housing and land values will keep going up, give an incentive to purchase the small substandard units down, pull them down, and put up more McMansions." He put, this was not an email to me, this was on Nextdoor, and I thought to myself, "Holy moly, this guy's like on the Planning Commission. He's walking through town. Did he think my house was one of the ones? It's like a kind of substandard? I mean, what is he talking about?" And I went online to see what the duties of a, a planning commissioner are. And in fact, he was within his rights to like walk around, I mean, within his job description, and that I find really concerning. So I think he should have a right to have his own, what he thinks. He should. He should have a right to speak his own mind, but the line is so closely blurred with, with his actions on the Planning Commission, and this really troubled me. Troubled me so much that I copied and pasted this into my file on my doc, on my computer to go, "What the hell was that?" So, anyway, I can send it to anybody that I, I have saved this. Thank you.
Thank you, Jill.
Hello, Stuart Griffith, 35-year resident of Ojai. I'm really disappointed in this, to say the least. I agree with Barbara Bowman and Lenny Clafe. The four points I'm looking at is misogyny, it's questionable. The notice, I think, was horrific. Underhanded political moves, not according to other board members of the Democratic Party in Ojai. Staff requests stopped after February, when he was asked to stop. I don't agree with all Jeffrey's politics. I've seen him do goofy stuff, you know? But he's the most enthusiastic guy I've ever seen. The reason he's walking the streets is because he's trying to really dig down and find solutions. I bet that guy has thought more about affordable housing and, and posted stuff publicly than anybody else in town I've seen. As far as misogyny, he vetted several candidates before the board, before the canvass or the, the board for the Democratic Party. And then he said, "Okay, let's step back." Well, gee, two of those candidates were more experienced females. Now, I can see how ladies would go, "Hey, you know, he used female in that description. It's not necessary." So I could see how you go, "Whoa, what's going on there?" But he did back two female candidates, Renee Roth and, and Leslie Ruhl. That's who he said he had worked, and he's promoting them. So the misogyny thing is questionable. Noticing while a guy is in Europe on vacation and then faulting him for not getting on Zoom? Who knows where this guy is? He could be on a boat in the Rhine or something, and we're, he's supposed to change his agenda so he can like, "Oh, fight something." Who would have ever imagined that city council would go after him? But you know what? It kind of fits the city council and what's going on right now. Because you guys just made some moves to change the makeup of the commissions. Andrew said he wanted to, he'd like to have somebody on the Planning Commission. Ooh, and all of a sudden, Jeffrey Starkweather's out? That's mind-blowing. Members of the Democratic Party Board, here's what one of them said. I think it's J.K. Nelson. "I was on the board at the time. Jeffrey did not do an end run around the agreed-upon process. It's the California Democratic Party, not club. There was no violation of their code of ethics. Further, Jeffrey absolutely made no endorsement decision before the club members voted at the endorsement meeting. All club members received multiple newsletters explaining the process and rules of the endorsements, which follow the rules of the Democrat Venture Committee. It is one of the primary jobs of all club presidents to central and central committee members to recruit Democrat candidates for any office." They vet them, then they feed them, and then when it goes to the forum for everybody to talk about, they step back and get out. There's nothing there.
Thank you, Stuart.
Excuse me, I have a, I have a, a question, Stuart. Stuart, I have a question. I just want to point out that it's not the city council that brought this. This was the mayor by herself who put this on the agenda without notification, at least to me or to Suzie. I don't know if the other council members were notified. So I don't want to bear the brunt of being, you know, it was not, it was not, it was not the city council. It was one member of the city council who has the right to put things on unilaterally at the very last minute. And that's exactly what happened. And just to point out, that was right after we got notification that the Cabrillo Vista Affordable Housing was, was in with, with the Community Development Director. That happened on the 5th, and this was noticed the next day. So, you know, I just want you to know that.
Any comments online, Weston?
Yes, Mayor, we currently have seven raised hands. First, we'll have Judy, followed by Becky, and then Tina Brumond. Judy, you have the floor? Judy, go ahead. Judy, we'll give you one last chance, and we'll move on. All right. Next, we have Becky. Becky, you have the floor?
Thank you, Weston. This comment is from Drew Mashburn, who is unable to be here tonight. "Good evening, all. I admire people who are willing to fit local, to fill local government positions, city council seats, and the various commissions and committees that advise the council. My admiration extends to citizens who step up to the plate to express their views. All must be, must interact with civility and respect to ensure a smooth-running democratic process. Unfortunately, Ojai Planning Commissioner Jeffrey Starkweather has been upsetting the balance of civility and respect for some time now. For example, a photo on Facebook of an August 10th, 2022 email sent by him includes his description of Ojai City Council candidates as, quote, 'weak, young, female opponents,' end quote. I find this statement to be appalling and reprehensible, especially when used by a city of Ojai governmental, government representative. The commissioner's disparaging statement is also included in an article on page A2 of the Friday, July 7th, 2023 edition of the Ojai Valley News. So it reaches far and wide. What an embarrassment for the city. To allow Jeffrey Starkweather to continue as a member of the Planning Commission would be saying to all of us that his misogynistic view of women is okay for a person in city government to hold and to express. That view is not respectful, fair, or factual to the women in this community. But that's not all. A new city manager will be starting soon. He and the staff deserve your protection from the toxic work environment that Commissioner Starkweather has created with his continued excessive and abusive demands of the staff, which, like his misogyny, cannot and should not be tolerated. The community also needs relief from the divisiveness that Starkweather has had a large hand in creating while pursuing his single-minded, pro-development agenda. I understand Commissioner Starkweather is presently away from the Ojai Valley on vacation. That is not a reason to delay his removal. He is aware that he is a subject of this meeting and can zoom into the meeting if he wishes. All city commissioners serve at the pleasure of the council and can be removed with or without cause at any time. Enough is enough. He is an unelected official. You do have cause, and now is the time to protect staff and the community from his abuse and divisiveness. The damage is real, and all of us deserve a fresh start and a chance to heal. I strongly urge you to vote tonight to immediately remove Jeffrey Starkweather from the Planning Commission." Thank you.
Thank you, Becky.
Next, we have Tina Brumond, followed by Barry Raab and Leslie Ferraro. Tina has left. Barry, Barry Raab, you are next in line. You have the floor?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, please.
I'm opposed to removing commissioners for reasons of personal and political retaliation, and Mayor Stix's actions demonstrate that is what she intends to do in this case. Claims Jeffrey Starkweather treated women disrespectfully during the campaign period, and that he must therefore be punished with removal from the Planning Commission. She has decided, months after she was presumably outraged, that she must act with urgency, so much so that she has chosen to agendize this item at a time when the target of her attack is not present to defend himself. Her hypocrisy and insincerity are underscored by the fact that she showed no outrage when her ally on the council, Andy Whitman, launched an embarrassingly juvenile attack meant to demean a female councilperson's intelligence as recently as the last council meeting. If Mr. Starkweather is to be considered for removal from the Planning Commission, the mayor should demonstrate he failed in his obligations in that position. That is not going to happen. Mr. Starkweather has a reputation as a diligent and effective commissioner. The mayor is correct in stating that the citizens of the city of Ojai are entitled to have a fair, ethical, and accountable local government. This agenda item is one more instance demonstrating they do not have that at the present time. The bullying tactics used by Mayor Stix and Andy Whitman, and the lawsuits that followed them like a swarm of flies, are a stark contrast to all that people mean when they say they love Ojai. I hope the majority of the council, and I'm looking at you, Rachel Lang, will not be drawn into this bad behavior. That's it. I don't need the balance of the time.
Next, we have Leslie Ferraro.
Thank you, Barry. Just a correction, that email was revealed 10 days ago. Okay, Les, pardon?
Next, we have Leslie Ferraro, followed by DeeDee Dorskind and Judy K. Nelson. Leslie, you have the floor?
Thank you. I skipped this the last time I spoke, and I apologize. I want to thank the mayor, the council, and the staff for all being here and doing what you do, not just every council meeting, but overall. I am here to add my voice to the removal of Jeffrey Starkweather as planning commissioner. I'm going to echo what Teal, Drew, Marcy, and Tara said, and most especially what Nora said. I think that his email is unacceptable as a commissioner of Ojai, and his abuse of staff is also unacceptable. And I think what I've been hearing from most of the men that have commented tonight and said that this is not misogynistic, you're men, period. And to a great extent, I believe that some of you are blinded by the fact that you're men. So I, I have a hard time hearing that from you. That may be my problem, and I will accept that. I have watched Planning Commission meetings, Suzie, in case you're going to ask me that. So I will answer that right off the front, but I refuse to be interrogated by you. The women who spoke tonight were very eloquent, and I think once, please, once, let the women's voices be heard. What Jeffrey said was wrong. The way Jeffrey has treated our staff is wrong, and it's time to put a stop to what has been wrong. Please, let Ojai stand up and say, "We're going to do what's right. We're going to make sure that women are treated fairly. Enough is enough." Thank you.
Thank you, Leslie.
Next, we have DeeDee, followed by Judy K. Nelson, and then Bill Miley. DeeDee, you have the floor?
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. First of all, I want to thank all of you for being, being present. And James, I wish you the best of luck. I'm sure it's going to be amazing as an experience. I spoke a few weeks ago, and I thought I would not have to do this again. But I am really dismissed, first of all, for you to send out an email that was over a year ago, and you're claiming that Jeffrey is misogynistic. I was so appalled at Councilmember Whitman when he turned to his fellow councilmember, Suzie Francina, and said, when she said, "I don't understand. You clearly said you rarely do. You said it, it's tape-recorded, we all heard it. As far as I'm concerned, you do not speak to a fellow councilmember in that manner. You have done this before in the past, and I find your behavior despicable. I'm embarrassed for you. And being an attorney, you should know better than to treat people that way." So people that are speaking about Jeffrey's, Jeffrey's behavior, we have a council member that we should be ashamed to have. Mayor Stix, I really wonder why this is so important to you, and you all have agreed to hire a new interim city manager, and you have faith in him, and you respect him, and you respect our city attorney. Well, Mayor Stix, you don't, because you didn't listen to his, his advice. But the rest of you, why you wouldn't wait for the new interim city manager to help you walk through these processes? Is tonight the only night you feel you can do this, Betsy? Because he's out of town, and he's not here to defend himself? Rachel, look at the people on either side of you. These are who are representing you. I'm shocked that you cannot think for yourself and be strong enough to think about, you've been on the commission with Jeffrey. This is not the man you want to get, take away about affordable housing, take his job away, which is voluntarily done. While he's not here to defend himself, I beg of you to stand your ground, Rachel, because either person on either side of you really are a disgrace. Thank you.
Thank you, DeeDee.
Next, we have Judy K. Nelson, followed by Bill Miley and Creya. Judy, you have the floor?
Okay. Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, hi. I'm a former president and a former board member of the Ojai Democratic Club, and I want to correct some misinformation here. The endorsement process followed the endorsement process of the county Democratic Party, as well as the state Democratic Party. well as the State Democratic Party. The email that Jeffrey sent out was in no way connected with the Democratic Club of Ojai. The email that was sent out was misfortunately forwarded by a member of a private nonprofit and is being used to disparage Jeffrey as being misogynistic. The California Democratic Party distinguishes between male and female candidates in inequality. His unfortunate use of the word "female" in describing weak candidates was most unfortunate. It was his private opinion that the candidates that had been filed were weak because they had no experience in politics or in any city council. So for anyone to accuse Jeffrey of being misogynistic in using the term "weak female" is totally specious. And for our illustrious mayor, who I love and I thank for attending Pride, and Rachel, thank you so much for your involvement in our Pride Walk, thank you so much, is most unfortunate for a private email that was mistakenly forwarded to a private party to be used politically is most unfortunate. I've worked with Jeffrey. Sometimes he is, you know, his emails are long, and nobody reads them because they're so long, but he's one of the most intelligent men I've ever met, especially in affordable housing. And affordable housing for our working people in Ojai is one of the most important issues, and that's what we should be addressing, not this specious thing that's happening now. So I just want to say that I can't believe that this is happening right now. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Judy.
Next, we have Bill Miley, followed by Creya, and then Tina Brumond. Mr. Miley, you have the floor.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hello. I'm prepared to respond to Mayor Stix's reasons for wanting Commissioner Jeffrey gone from the Planning Commission. My disclosure is, Jeffrey is my friend, and I have worked with Jeffrey on housing for a number of years. But I believe the bigger question needs to be addressed first, and that is, our justice system in the form of government and how we resolve conflict. The fact that Commissioner Starkweather is and has been outside of the United States and Europe may not have been known by the mayor. I would give the mayor that doubt, but Jeffrey's not been able to be here. Hopefully, your council will table and reset the agenda date to provide fairness, transparency, better communications in this difficult process. Also, I'd like to respond to several of the details and implied charges. Number one, what 140 communications? I happen to know Jeffrey Starkweather, as a citizen, made many requests for disclosure of public information to the interim city clerk of the city under state law for public I don't believe, too, I don't believe there has been any direct talk between the mayor and Commissioner. It seems logical that such should occur early on, initiated either by the mayor or by the Commissioner. Number three, there is maybe another motivation for this effort to remove Commissioner Starkweather. He is very supportive of the affordable housing. As president of the Ojai Democratic Club, he advocated strongly for the Becker Group, the four-part project. Mayor Stix advocated strongly against the Becker Group. I was very supportive of the Becker Group. Number four, currently, on the future Planning Commission agendas, the Becker Group has requested two of the four-part package to be presented independently. This request for housing will include affordable housing, DED units. It's conceivable that the mayor knows this and would like Commissioner Starkweather gone and replaced by one of her choosing. In conclusion, it seems best to table Item Six, reset a date so open communication can occur, adequate time can be available for proper response preparation, and to request further information, and a meeting between the mayor and the Commissioner. Let's play fair. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill.
Next, we have Creya, followed by Tina Brumond, and then Taryn Longo. Creya, you have the floor.
Yes, this is actually Clay Creasy. I have a new computer, and the computer has not learned my real name yet, so I apologize for that. I approached this issue from the point of view of the lesson that we would like our children and grandchildren, in my case, to have. And the fundamental issue I think that we are grappling with is whether two wrongs can make a right or not. When I was raising my kids, I often told them that was not the case. You couldn't correct one wrong by making another wrong. I'm not actually going to defend Jeffrey's language in the email. I think it was meant not to be public, but it's certainly reflective of his thinking, I suspect. And the use of the term "female" and the weak, young phrase that he used is completely inappropriate. In a corporate America setting, he would be reprimanded for doing that. But what's important is, he wouldn't be fired for doing that. He would be given the opportunity to recognize the mistake that it represented and to make amends and apologize to whomever was offended. And I think that's what we need to do here. We need to give Jeffrey the opportunity to either defend himself or apologize for inappropriate phraseology. Maybe he'll learn to be better. That would be by far a better outcome than creating a kangaroo court rush to judgment tonight. There is virtually no downside for the council to postpone this decision for two weeks and let Jeffrey be here and hear from him. Who knows? He may say, "You are right. I was wrong in using that phraseology, and I apologize, and I won't do it again." Who among us would throw that baby out with the bathwater over the outrage that many people feel? And I understand it because there's a lot of misogyny in the world. I've witnessed a lot of it myself, and I'm not here to defend it at all. But I think the better approach to getting rid of it is to teach people, to give them the opportunity to learn their error of their ways rather than just throwing them out in the night, especially when they're not even in the country to defend themselves. So those are my thoughts, and I appreciate your considered action in this matter. Thank you.
Thank you, Clay.
Next, we have Tina Brumond, followed by Taryn Longo, and then Colin Jones. Tina, you have the floor.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. I've heard a lot of comments tonight, and I'd like to address this. Mr. Starkweather is being questioned right now for his actions, and if he were to be an employee, not a volunteer, I'm certain that when an employee is about to be fired, there is not a consultation for the employee to defend himself. He is judged off of his actions, and I don't hear a lot of denial, actually, about his actions and their inappropriateness. This goes far, far beyond any accusations of misogyny, which are accurate, and many people have already pointed out the detrimental impacts of those comments. I would, however, like to point out that what is very concerning to me is that this individual, who has never been elected in Ojai for any open seat, was appointed to the Planning Commission by an outgoing council member. It bothers me that he holds a Planning Commission seat. He has a Housing Commission seat, a Traffic Commission seat. He is the president of the Democratic Club of Ojai. He is the treasurer of the Democratic Club of Ventura. Additionally, he regularly presents to the Ojai Valley MAC on issues from a position of a Planning Commission and a private citizen, often blurring the lines of capacity and authority. And I do not believe that this is on accident. This blurring of the lines is on purpose. And I heard another Planning Commissioner tonight extol all of these reasons why Mr. Starkweather has the ability to talk about his own personal beliefs, and that's great. He sure does. But not when his actions do it in a way that blurs the lines of his authority. He is well past the amount of power that one individual who is non-elected has in this town. I would also like to say it is inappropriate to be admonishing Rachel Lang in the way that three or four of the speakers have done tonight. She has shown up as a thoughtful public servant, very, very, very much researching the issues to play her emotions this way. By asking her to judge the people sitting next to her, to her left or right, it's inappropriate. And just so we are clear, Souza Francina, he did, Jeffrey Starkweather posted less than 20 hours ago on Facebook. He could have defended himself if he chose to. Thank you.
Thank you, Tina.
Next, we have Taryn Longo, followed by Colin Jones. Taryn, you have the floor.
Hello, thank you. I don't know a lot about the ins and outs of what's going on with Jeffrey and with the email. I didn't see the email, and I'm not on social media, so I don't really want to speak to exactly what should happen or shouldn't happen with him. But I am a domestic violence certified advocate for the state of California, and I'm a somatic practitioner, and I specialize in abuse dynamics and control dynamics. I only say that because I want to invite all of the women here who are speaking against misogyny. Please do continue to speak. It's so important that we all speak. It's really scary to speak. I know that very well myself. I work with women all the time through the legal processes of having to speak up against violence and misogyny of all sorts. But what I also see is that our council, certain members of our council, have had their own ethical issues. And there are some major ethical issues that I've seen in the past few months, if not longer. And I've witnessed a lot of misogynist behavior right there amongst council. It's a tactic often used, there's a patterning that's used where we deflect, where people who are trying to maintain control of a narrative deflect. And I just want to invite everybody who's speaking so bravely against misogyny to really pan out and learn about coercive control, learn about the strategies that are often used, and don't get distracted because there's more misogyny happening than just this. So don't become like a pawn in these political moves. Stay an independent thinker. Don't lose your ability to have critical thinking. Ask more questions. Don't just be, don't just be told what to think. Really root yourself and think about what's happening because there's a bigger picture happening here, and there's a patterned behavior that's happening where there's a lot of deflection and a lot of reversal of who's doing what. So just pan out sometimes and really check in with that, and that's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Taryn.
Last raised hand on Zoom is Colin Jones. Colin, you have the floor.
Another blind man here, or is that sexist because I have an opinion? I don't know Jeffrey Starkweather personally, though I recognize him from city council meetings. And I think we can all agree that Jeffrey's biggest problem is that he's heavy-handed. As for saying someone is a weak female candidate or a weak, young, male candidate, this is common parlance to describe someone who is possibly unelectable. It is an opinion only about electability. It seems to me that this is more about the mayor wanting to get rid of someone who truly wants affordable housing and may actually get it. Further, to remove someone without a chance to defend their position is disgraceful. Is this still America? Betsy, please stop. You're killing our confidence in honest government with this sham. Thank you.
Thank you, Colin.
That's all, Mayor.
Okay. We have one more Speaker in the House, Judy Murphy.
Good evening. I'm Judy Murphy. I am a Planning Commissioner, so I know Jeffrey well, but I do not speak tonight on behalf of the Planning Commission. I want to tell you about how several months ago, I was asked by the city clerk's office to submit any emails to or from Commissioner Starkweather. The commissioners among ourselves do not exchange emails, and we do not discuss cases that are before us. So I had no emails related to the Planning Commission. And further beyond that, I did not think it was appropriate to ask us for our private emails. So I did not comply with that request. However, this request did make me worry that somebody was painting a target on Jeffrey's back. I find it concerning that this item was placed on the agenda while Commissioner Starkweather is out of the country. This is very unfair. And at the very least, I urge you to postpone or continue this item. Jeff has a right to be here and respond, to develop his defense, and to look you in the eye. You really can't do that at 5:00 in the morning or whatever time it is in England. He deserves due process. Please give it to him. Thank you.
I have a question.
Thank you, Judy, for Ms. Murphy.
Yes.
When you got the request for the emails.
Yes.
Were you informed who requested those emails?
No.
It was Leslie Hess, who is the mayor's Assistant Treasurer for her campaign, who is suing us on the valet parking, who I'm not sure whether or not she was responsible for actually going through those emails. But that request was made by her, and I assume that those emails were then given to the mayor.
I did not know that. Thank you for that information.
You're welcome. Those all the comments, Wesen?
Yes, Mayor. No more on Zoom.
One more here.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. Christine Golden?
Yeah, of course.
Haven't you already spoken on this?
No.
No.
Even though I didn't put a card in, I really, really did not want to get up here and speak, but I am going to because I was a Commissioner for 14 years, which many of you know. So I know a little bit about what it is and what it takes to be a Commissioner, and what the do's and the don'ts are. And I also want to speak to, you know, this districting thing, which has disenfranchised me and everybody else. I'm in District Four, so I want you to represent me, Rachel.
I'm not in District Four.
I'm sorry, Three, and I want you to represent me. Two, whichever one it is. I'm in your district. Well, that's how silly they are. Like, who can even keep track of the numbers? Represent me by doing the right thing, which Quillissey has talked about, which Jones talked about, which this other Planning Commissioner talked about. Due process. You have nothing to lose with due process. Do for this Commissioner what you did for another Commissioner, Betsy, that you didn't dismiss. And was abusing staff time. I won't get into that. I won't tell stories. And I still haven't heard anybody say he was abusing staff. He was using staff time, whatever that is. He deserves a right to respond. Maybe he should go. I'll tell you what you could all do tonight. Why don't you pass a resolution suggesting the Democratic Club get rid of him? Because, yeah, that was awful, that thing that he wrote. And somebody put me on that email chain, and the guy, I'm sorry, I'm going to say something rude here, he has diarrhea of the mouth. He has no personal editor. He just writes, 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 writes. And, you know, so make a resolution and suggest to the Democratic Club they choose somebody else. But you have to separate out, like Quillissey said. Planning Commission, Democratic Planning Commission, Democratic Club, freedom of speech. He has a right as that president to say whatever. You can't dismiss him for that. You can have to dismiss him for misconduct as a planning commissioner. So keep it there and wait. Please, represent me. Thank you.
Thank you, Christine. Quick question for Christine, if I could.
Christine.
Hello, 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 hello.
Yes.
So the Democratic Club.
Yeah.
One of the women who was referenced in that email was Catherine Donwin, who Jeffrey recruited to become the treasurer of the Democratic Club. He chose to mentor her. And I think that that, you know, so he is working to bring new people into the Democratic Club who showed interest in running.
Is this a question, council member?
Did you know that?
No.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, let's move on to discussion. Who would like to begin?
I'd like to begin, if I may. If no one objects, that's okay. Well, Christine actually brought up, the last speaker, Christine, former arts commissioner, Christine Golden, brought up a good point. It may well be that there should be a discussion that perhaps Jeffrey should choose between his role as a planning commissioner and president of the Democratic Club. There may be, there does seem to be, you know, some conflict, and that's a discussion that would be worth, worth having. I would totally like to do that. I would like to just say, speak to the mayor's first paragraph referring where you reference the weak, young female opponents. As you well know, those three words galvanize the women in the community that were already headed in a direction where they didn't like him. It's a, I need to add that it's a well-known fact that council member Andy Whitman and you have wanted to remove Jeffrey for a long time.
That is conjecture. I've never said that, so let's just stick to the facts, please.
Okay, all right. Well, here's the fact. And I'm going to read from Bill Miley's letter. As president of the Democratic Club, Jeffrey Starkweather was responsible for planning and conducting an active campaign to elect folks to run our city government who would best serve. Weak was descriptive of no prior political office and little or no experience in government practices, affairs, policies, finance, and strategies. And it is a fact that one of the women he referred to, Katie Donwin, who spoke tonight, is now the treasurer. He had nothing but high praise for Michelle, who I actually campaigned for, was a strong advocate. I didn't like Leslie at all, but I took time to get to know her. And, you know, I mean, we all have our prejudices and impressions, and our job as council members is to get to know people. No one is as bad as we think. Somebody else said that, I'm quoting, and no one is as good as we think. But my real problem, it's not, I, you know, I think there's nothing wrong with having a discussion about a planning commissioner. You have, as has been pointed out, you have, as a new council member, you have the right to dismiss commissioners. What I strongly object to, and before I get to the objection, I do want to point out there has not been, to best of my knowledge, a single complaint from any of the planning commissioners about Jeffrey Starkweather. I spoke with three, personally spoke with, well, I spoke with two, and then I communicated via email with the other two, and they had nothing but, the people, the commissioners I spoke with had nothing but good to say about Jeffrey, how well he works with everyone. Anyone that watches the meetings can see that he works well. He doesn't bring all this extra crap that's all, you know, if you, if you want to use the word conjecture, I can, I can use it as well, that he doesn't bring that into the planning commission. So that's a fact, that to the best of my knowledge, that's a fact, that there have been no complaints from the planning commissioners themselves. But what I really object to is that the goal here, the way this is characterized, that he's, you, by, you basically characterize him as, as a misogynist on the basis of those three words. It seems to me that your goal is defamation of his character, character. When you characterize someone as a misogynist, and whether that was your intention or not, we receive letters from high, from high school students who've never watched a single planning commission, who are convinced from your leadership and from your mentoring that this man is a misogynist. I mean, to me, you should ask your students to look at all the issues. You don't just, you know, the fact that they base their opinion on this man solely on what you have taught them is just...
Just, that is, just to correct the record, they are not my students, and I think it's really important that we respect people's opinions, so please don't. That, that is conjecture.
Okay, may I ask?
And, no, you cannot ask where people, I mean, people write in all the time. No.
You have absolutely nothing to do with these students writing in.
Souza, Souza, let's, let's please stick to the agenda item because...
I am stating that I don't, I, I think a discussion on his two prominent roles in the community is worth having. But I object, and I also question the timing, because I was aware of this email back in August, and since we're all about transparency and the cat's already out of the bag, it's a well-known fact that Mark's, Councilmember Whitman's brother, Mark, sent the email to Heidi, and at the point that she showed it to me, you were, well, I will only, I can only speak from what I recall.
Could we actually correct the record there? Heidi, do you want to correct that? Because you're saying, no, that's not the case.
I'd be happy to correct the record. She sent it to Andy. So about 10 days ago, Jeffrey Starkweather was doing yet another one of his public assaults on Facebook about members of this council. And he actually said on Facebook, and I, I'm happy to get it on my phone, but he actually said, if anybody has any information, that basically calls him out and says that he's not factual, to please do so. And so I did. So I was the one who posted the email. It was an email that was sent to my husband, and I have no problem with letting him stand on his own words. I have the email right here. I think people read it and decided for themselves what he meant. So I don't, I didn't send the email, I didn't write the email. These are his words, not mine. And, and you know what? I am sick and tired of listening to him as a city commissioner say things that are not factual. And if I may, I'm going to share a few of them.
Wait, I was interrupted.
Excuse me. This is inappropriate.
Oh, is it?
Well, inappropriate.
If you're going to call me out.
Excuse me.
If you're going to call me out.
Please, 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 no yelling, and, at least one person can talk at a moment. You raised an issue.
Yeah.
Saying that Heidi, and so I think it's good to clarify.
But you interrupted me. I didn't get to tell my side.
So that is why.
All right, I just want to make sure that I can tell it after she's finished.
Of course, but can we finish clarifying? The question, the question, excuse me, I'm going to call a point of privilege here. The question to Ms. Whitman was, she came up to say that it wasn't she who received the email. We understand that. She has told us that it was Councilman Whitman who received the email, who must have then given it to Ms. Whitman, because Councilman Francina has said that in August, you stopped her in your driveway, and you showed her.
Yes, you did. As far as my witness.
All right, so, so let's just, let's just, let's end this. Let's end this.
You showed me.
Excuse me.
Point of order.
Order, order, order. Let's just all be quiet for a second.
Can I, point of order. Can, can I pause this whole conversation and ask the city manager, ask James something? Okay. So I'm aware of the fact that we have a really important topic to talk about tonight, which is our paving plan, which I think is probably the most important thing, that the one, one of the two things that you said that you really wanted to discuss before you leave. And I'm wondering if it would, if it would be in our best interest, if you would think that it would be in our best interest to move forward with that and table this for another time.
Well, I think that...
I don't want to do this again. I don't want to. I, I'm, I don't think anybody wants to do this again. And at the same time, we, the paving plan is so important. It's one of the most important things that we have to do.
So make a motion.
And I would say, I appreciate the sentiment, and I agree, but I also think it's 10:00 PM, and I don't, the payment plan is important enough that we should talk about it earlier in the meeting when people can participate in it, because the real point of it was to get community feedback on it. So I don't think that, I, I wouldn't recommend opening that item at this point. We have it done. It's in, you know, it's complete and ready to go for the next meeting, but I think, I wouldn't, I wouldn't go there tonight, so.
And there's no time. We're not, there's no...
No.
Okay. All right, well, let's continue the discussion.
I am regretful that I moved this item up.
Okay, let's continue. Would someone else like to speak?
Yeah, I'll speak. So I'm not going to talk about the email other than to clarify that my brother approached me before I had any thought about running, and let me know that he was on a committee that was very concerned about climate change, and that they were looking for someone who would be willing to pass, you know, real city regulations that weren't filled with exceptions, that would reduce greenhouse gases. And I ended up, you know, speaking extensively to the entire committee about that issue. And my brother's involvement, which is negligible, but he was surprised that Jeffrey had already picked who his candidate was when he thought I was the, you know, person who could help him with his political aspirations of passing greenhouse gas reduction in our community. So that's the only part. My, my brother would not be happy at all that he's been drug into this conversation. In fact, after I talked to many, many people about what was going on in O.I., I went back to my brother and I said, you know, Mark, you and I don't see things the same way on, you know, development and building issues. And I said, it could be very possible that I would be asked to rule on things that would not, you know, be in your personal best interests. So if you don't want me to run, tell me now. And he said, no, I think climate change is the most important thing that we will deal with in our community. And, you know, his personal belief, other people have other beliefs. But I wish everybody would stop speculating and dragging my family into this whole thing. So, you know, this, this question about whether we should remove Jeffrey Starkweather and being characterized as being a politicization of the planning commission, commissioner role is, I think, kind of the reverse of the way I view it. I have been, you know, resident of the city for over 50 years and have watched political processes going on here and was a planning commissioner. And, you know, kind of the norm has always been that if you take a position seat, even though you may be very, have, you feel very strong politically, you don't make a big, certainly not contesting the city council that appointed you. I've never seen this before, you know, in the years that I've been here. Challenging the city council repeatedly on the policies that we've already adopted is, that's politicization of the planning commissioner role. So our guidelines for commissioners say that each commission member should be aware of the responsibilities that go along with officially serving the city, consider the overall public good, not the exclusive point of view of a sole group of interests. Individual board, commission, and committee members must not represent their own views or recommendations as those of the board, commission, or committee unless the majority of the board has officially voted to approve such action. Jeffrey has continually asserted his, you know, views that are, relate to city policy that are not his role to be talking about city policy. Souza, I think that you're right, that the, the real crux of this discussion is can you be the president of a very active political club and then also be a, a planning commissioner who is, the public has the right to expect that you're going to be a very considerate, unbiased, but if you are constantly pushing your agenda on policies for the city, how can people believe that they're going to get a fair hearing? So I will say that there was a discussion here, city council, that we were going to, we were addressing affordable housing, housing in general, and we all agreed that we'd have a public workshop to address housing as a city council. And James had staff, you know, working up a presentation for that workshop, and Jeffrey decided he was going to make a joint meeting between the planning commission and the Democratic Club, and, you know, basically wasted the, the time of the staff who had spent time trying to prepare for that meeting. It also, I talked about this at the last meeting, I mean, I think it's really important that we get guidance from staff. I mean, I, I'm always trying to do the right thing for the community. I'm always trying to make people's lives better. And I don't pretend to know how that happens until I hear from staff all the pros, cons, and alternatives. And so I'm, I'm kind of concerned that that workshop went forward as a quasi-city meeting that staff didn't have any input on how that went forward, and neither did we when we'd already decided we were going to have a workshop. So that, I think, is, I, I can't justify that. It's not anything that I can imagine any prior commissioner ever doing to the city council or to the city manager. And, you know, by the way, before I was on planning commission, this is back in, you know, like, 2005 or something like that, I was pretty vocal on planning issues for the city. In fact, very vocal, and, and I, actually, I often bet, you know, butted heads with Sue Horgan, and Sue was the one who appointed me because she knew I was interested. But once I took the role of a planning commissioner... once I took the role of a planning commissioner, um, I don't know if someone told me this or if it was just my understanding and assumption. I just decided it was totally inappropriate for me to jump in and to do anything about planning other than what was presented to the planning commission. And then I would, you know, fairly, uh, decide those issues. Um, so when a planning, this is also part of our guidelines, when, when making statements to the press, members should indicate that the commission actions are recommendations, that final action will be taken by the city council and, uh, comments to the press should be factual. So since Jeffrey's been a planning commissioner, he has written many, many editorials published in the Ojai paper. Uh, so in March, he said, uh, why I've been lobbying the city council to create stakeholder advisory committees for housing, climate change and other issues. He said, we have seen here in the Ojai City Council where a three-member city majority has passed a series of ordinances lobbied for by a highly motivated group of supporters of ideologically driven Simply Ojai. Um, that is not a factual statement. I was never lobbied by any individual from Simply Ojai on any of those issues that we addressed, never spoke to anyone, a Simply Ojai person as, uh, we discussed the, um, the greenhouse gas reduction ordinance that we passed. Uh, I wasn't lobbied by, um, Simply Ojai for, uh, the, uh, for the, um, rent stabilization and tenant protection programs. Um, and so I also have a problem with the idea that Simply Ojai, who I have no connection with, I do, I do know people who, you know, work with and through Simply Ojai, but I personally have no connection with Simply Ojai. I have a big problem with the idea that Jeffrey, as the president of a, let me see if I can get the words right, um, ideologic, ideologically driven, uh, Ojai Valley Democratic Club. So, one of my concerns about Jeffrey and why I think it's, he, he's not, you know, I, I, I don't want anyone to say, to believe that I don't think Jeffrey has a free speech right. He has the right to come out and speak about all of this stuff, but I think it's totally wrong for him to decry his opposition as the bad guys. And that constantly happens with Jeffrey. And it's not good for our community to have that. And so it ends up translating here. You know, you guys are right, I'm wrong. But that's, you know, uh, that's the way it usually plays out is that, you know, there's, we can't just disagree. It's got to be a screaming match about, you know, how horrible people are. And, um, so he wrote a letter in February to the Ojai Valley News accusing the mayor of ethical breaches and questioning her management of the agenda, which he called an outrageous authoritizing move, authoritarian move to stifle First Amendment protection public criticisms of her questionable conflicts of interest and ethical behavior at the start of her second term. Um, I mean, I don't know a hundred percent about how the agenda program works because Betsy works with James to do that, but I guarantee you, James has not allowed his mayor to engage in outrageous authoritarian moves to stifle the First Amendment. Um, in October of 2022, he wrote a letter telling the public that they should support the Becker Development Agreement. Now, I'm sorry, but I, as the president of the Ojai Valley Democratic Club, it's perfectly reasonable for Jeffrey to write that letter. I, before I became a commissioner, I would write letters like that to the paper. Um, the, it is not okay in my mind to have a planning commissioner who's had the project come through him and now it's been passed off to the city council.
Didn't come through.
To be jumping in to lobby the city council on how they're going to make a decision on an important city issue. I, um, he wrote a letter in August of 2022 to the Ojai Valley News and, you know, this one really bothers me. One, because I was at the meeting and then I went back and watched the tape, uh, of this meeting. But, um, in 2016, there was a meeting to discuss whether the campus of the city hall could take on a 40-person, a 40-unit project. Um, and what Jeffrey wrote about that project, it says, recall the 2016 city council meeting where a crowd of upper-middle-class residents. I think he meant that as a pejorative term for people who live here in Ojai. Uh, they protested a proposed small development of housing for lower-income households on publicly-owned property. They were hollering the same disinformation about water, traffic and density that we hear now from some of the same people. Um, that is not a factual statement. That is a criticism of members of the public who came to a public meeting and he wants to deride them as not having a legitimate voice because they're upper-middle-class or because they're concerned about their water future, they're concerned about traffic in the city of Ojai, and they're concerned about how densely our city is evolving. I, I can't fault anybody who lives in Ojai and has concern about our water future, even over the, even after the rainfall that we had, you know, this past winter. You know, fantastic saving us, uh, you know, from a lot of water pain, uh, by having such a great year and we'll probably have lots of water for, uh, you know, we have a few years, uh, we got out of that. But water is an issue for us. We can't just say what we can do in the next few years. Water is an issue for this community's survival for the next several decades and we better manage it properly. Um, traffic is something that is driving people nuts in Ojai. Uh, we've never seen traffic like we have now and we have traffic, but Jeffrey wants to delegitimize people who want to talk about water and traffic.
I'm going to call a point of privilege here. I, I really have to. Um, I think that your point is, is a really simple one. Is Jeffrey speaking as a planning commissioner or is he speaking as the head of the Democratic Club, in which case he has a right to say all of those? Now-
And we have the right to unilaterally remove him.
Excuse me.
Let's have one at a time, please. Are you finished speaking?
I mean, because this is endless.
Let me finish. I mean, you know, most of the time we have, just let me finish. Then you can say anything bad about me you want.
Could you wrap, wrap it up? Thank you, Andy.
Sure. Um, he has, uh, gone in the paper and accused school board members of unethical behavior. I don't, I don't think that's a proper role for a planning commissioner to get involved in our relationship with school board members. So, um, I know that another, in another occasion, we had a, this is fairly recently, there was a parking, um, committee meeting and there was a discussion about the, um, uh, valet parking and, uh, you know, Jeffrey came bloated to bear with people to say, we should not settle this lawsuit. We should not settle this lawsuit. And it wasn't his role to make that advice. Um, and he was doing it in his official capacity at that, at that meeting. So, I know I've talked a lot and you guys don't want to hear me, but I, um, oh, he also went to the MAC. Um, and actually, this is one of the biggest concerns I have. He has repeatedly stated, and someone even, you know, parroted him tonight, that we haven't built any affordable housing in decades or whatever that statement is. That is not only an incorrect statement and not factual, but when you're the planning commissioner and you say that, people believe that you have a reason to know what you're saying, even though it is totally untrue. And I've asked James before to verify that and he said that's untrue. And the other thing that happens when a planning commissioner states publicly that we refuse to build any affordable housing in this community, it hurts our ability to get the, uh, HCD to approve our housing element. And so he's politically campaigning because he really wants to build a lot of housing. Uh, and, you know, I think, bring all the housing projects here and hopefully we can get some good ones that are going to fit our community well, but to push and drive that without it going through the proper process. He also went to the Casitas Water Board for a project that he knew was going to come to the planning commission and urged them to give water allocations for the project. I mean, no one in the city had given him authority to go to the municipal water district and say, hey, give these guys water. We want this project. He's not supposed to make a commitment to a project before it ever comes to the planning commission. He knew darn well it was going to come to the planning commission. So, I think that the role of president of the, uh, Ojai Valley Democratic Club and the role of a commissioner, um, it's possible that those two things could be balanced, but it's not being balanced. And, uh, I think that's enough of a reason besides the fact that he's just, you know, he's repeatedly, uh, personally attacking, um, people on city council.
Okay. Uh, council member rule?
Yeah. Um, there's a lot to unpack there. Um, and I'm going to really try to refrain from saying that you also attack people on city council. Um, I'm going to refrain from trying to say that. That having been said-
Wait, you just said it.
Oh, did I? I apologize. It was my mistake. Um, I'm going to go through the points that are here in the mayor's letter. I do agree that we can ask Commissioner Starkweather to make sure that he differentiates whether he is speaking as an individual and how that would combine with president of the Democratic Club. I don't know what their, what their regulations are around. Can you say that you were speaking on behalf of the Democratic Club when you're speaking as an individual? That would be something for them to work out. But I think that we can offer, we can ask him to make sure that whenever he speaks publicly, he says, I am speaking as a commissioner or I am speaking as an individual slash head of the Democratic Club, depending on how that plays out. That seems to me something that we can do and that seems to me something that he can do. I also think if a problem with the emails, he can also tag those emails. I am speaking as. Um, so I think that that is a solution that we can ask. And, um, I, I mean, we have heard from the head of the planning commission that he has not found this to be the case with Jeffrey where the lines have blurred. I think it's very easy to go through and say they have blurred, but Steve Quilisi is head of the planning commission and I guarantee you, he would not let that fly. I mean, and, and he also says very clearly that they follow the laws. And if they want the, if they want to make an exception to the law, they come to the city council and they ask the city council to change that law. That planning commission votes 5-0. Okay? That planning commission, at, at the least the minutes that I have seen, they vote 5-0. So that's the first thing. Um, we have heard from the mayor that Jeffrey has abused the city staff. We have not heard from the city staff that they have been abused. Um, we have the, we have, um, James Vega noted here in his email, but we have not heard from him that he felt that the city staff was being abused and that when he asked to stop, that abuse continued. I think that is really important. I don't think the mayor has the right to unilaterally decide that the staff has been, has been abused. Let's ask the staff. That's my first point. Um, we will ask the staff. I mean, I could ask them now or I could continue with my comments. I can ask the staff. Sure. James, do you feel like you and your staff have been abused?
I, I think the smart answer is, is probably a one-word answer, but I'm not going to give the smart answer right now. Um, so I think that what I'm hearing from everybody is the concern is more of the separation of roles and the transparency and the appearance that that gives the public and the public maybe not understanding, is he speaking as a commissioner? Is he speaking as a city representative or not? And so, um, you know, when I was questioned earlier, you know, I said, that's my job. I, I responded to Starkweather and I handled it the way I think I should have handled it. And, um, so to me, the abusive, um, the question of if, if he's abusive, I don't, I wouldn't consider what he did abusive to me, but I do think the bigger question maybe for the council to focus on is the separation of roles and what the appearance, uh, what the community's understanding about what's happening and how, you know, how to address that. So.
Yes, I, I agree. And I think that my suggestion that all of his communication be one or the other, if he chooses not to, uh, abdicate one of his roles, he just simply has to, he has to be very clear and define that. Um, I do think his benefit to this community, yes, he's got diarrhea of the mouth. Yes, my God, the emails that come. And whoever got up here and said, you know, I read some of them. I don't read any of them. I read all of them. They were really helpful. It is a mixed bag with him, but to say that the council should be, should be regulating, you know, who reads what, you know, like, like the staff isn't able to make a judgment on that, whether or not they're going to read it, whether or not they're going to read all of it, half of it, none of it, pass it on. Um, so I, I don't think that is for the council. That is, that is an appropriate use of, of, of what we do to, you know, evaluate whether or not Jeffrey's emails are appropriate or not, if they are not abusing the staff. You know, he's got a communication style. It's not everybody's favorite. Okay. And so moving on, um, you know, to the misogyny, um, claim and what, I, the, the word misogyny is not used, but it has been used by many, many, many of the citizens here who take his comments to be misogynistic. And, um, you know, I look at what he's done. I look at who he's reached out to, who he has attempted to mentor. And once again, I will point out that he went to Catherine Donwyn and he recruited her to be part of the Democratic Club and to get her involved in city government. And that is the absolute opposite of being misogynistic. That is opening up the doors for young women to come into the political arena. That is opening up the doors for young women to come into the political arena. So, you know, I, I think, yes, it was probably a bad, it was probably a bad way to phrase it, but I have also heard, and I don't know this to be true or not, that when you are talking about candidates, you do talk about gender. That is what Judy Nelson said. I don't think any of us would ever accuse Judy Nelson of being misogynistic, or, you know, giving any kind of cover to misogynists. I don't believe that, and I don't believe we believe that. So, I am, I am not going to, I, I'm gonna take his actions over his words, and how he has tried to mentor the young candidates. And he did also reach out to my opponent to see what she wanted, if she would like to have been on a committee or, or something like that, to involve her in politics. I know that to be the case. I've spoken with her about it. So, his, his deeds do not indicate that at all. He's trying to open the doors for young, for, for young women who would like to participate. And finally, I have to say that, you know, the timing of this, once again, you know, we received notice on the 5th that the Cabrillo Vista was being reviewed by the Community Development Director, and on the 6th, this item is put on the agenda by the mayor with no second and no notice of anybody. So, the timing is also, number one, suspicious, and number two, Jeffrey is not here. He's not here to talk about this. So, those are my, those are my basic feelings on this. I do think that what I've heard is a complete and utter character assassination. And when we talk about divisiveness, the divisiveness comes from the mayor unilaterally deciding to put something on the agenda that is really sketchy. And that's where this arrived from. And, and so, here we are. So, that is, that is my, that is my take on this. The final thing I will say is that housing has turned out to be the question of the day. So, I mean, there's climate change, and the planet heating up, that is, that is a very global and big question, and it does filter down to us. But when we look out there, we see our neighbors and our community members with no place to live. And so, on a really visceral level, that is the issue for us. And he has worked tirelessly to, to make that happen. And I understand that his approach is not popular. And, you know, I think that we now all understand what the concept of NIMBYism is, whereas we didn't really, six or seven years ago, quite so well. And, you know, he, he, that is something that, that he believes in. So, you know, we can, we can strike him down for that, or we can say, you know, now there's the opposite. There's YIMBY, which is yes in my backyard. So, none of this, to me, seems appropriate at all. It just seems to me so wrong in so many ways. And I will say that, that the vast major, a good portion of the people who have come up here to speak against Jeff, Jeffrey Starkweather and kicking him off, also spoke about me and not getting indemnification, and talked about Sousa being thrown off the council. So, to think that this is the community, these, and these are the same people that are online constantly speaking really divisive stuff, really divisive stuff. So, they're not talking about policy. They're talking about personal divisiveness. So, those are my, those are my comments. I would not support removing him. I would support an informal conversation with him, and getting, and, and getting a agreement from him that in all public communication, if he wants to keep both roles, he must declare, whether he's speaking as a planning commissioner, as a liaison as a planning commissioner, or whether he's speaking as an individual and/or president of the, of the Democratic Club. And so, that is where I stand on this issue, and that is what I will support.
Councilmember Lang?
Okay. Thank you. Thank you for your comments, everyone who spoke tonight. I'm gonna bring up a couple of different points. The first one is that after sitting here through this really painful meeting, I, I want to, I think the way that we go about removing commissioners, we need, we need a new process for this, because it feels a lot like public shaming on all sides, and it's not fair to anyone, especially not fair to the people who feel like they, they, they are being interrogated, or that they don't, they can't speak. The people who are sitting through these painful meetings, nobody wants to hear their neighbors talking about them like this, regardless of what happened. I think this could have been handled in a much better way. And at the same time, I mean, and, and so, that's period. That, that's, that's how I feel. I, I'm, I'm questioning in my mind why Jeffrey didn't reach out to, to me. I mean, I can understand why he didn't reach out, reach out to the other two, but I didn't, I'd never heard from him saying, "Can we please move this forward?" I, I don't know, I don't know if he was trying to, I, I don't know the motivation for not, for not making it clear what he wanted. And so, I heard a lot of people speaking on his behalf, but I didn't hear him speaking. And so, I'm, I, I think that the conversation about him not being here, and not being in the country, and I think it's all speculation. And I don't know, I don't know from him what, what his motivation is for not even writing an email. Like, we know how prolific he is with emails. And so, I'm wondering if there's a political move. And at this point, I don't trust any, I don't trust any one side or one perspective. I mean, I'm trying to, I'm trying to be in the middle ground here, as many of, many of the callers talked about. And, and so, I don't know if there's some kind of political motivation for him not reaching out and saying, "Please move this forward." Do you know what I'm saying? Like, it, to me, it just feels like there's, there are a lot of people speaking on his behalf, but I haven't heard from him. And I never received an email before this, saying, "Can we please move this to a different time?" So, you know, so it leaves me in a really precarious situation. I've spent the last five days talking, and talking, and talking, and talking about this to a lot of people, including, thank you so much, Chair Quilisi, and all of, all of the planning commissioners. I also spoke to some people in the, in the, or had correspondence with some people in the Democratic Club on the county. I, and I feel like a couple of things are clear. One, I, I think the question of what role is he filling, and, you know, where, where is he coming from? I think this is the, the crux of the issue, because there has been, you know, Councilmember Whitman alluded to the misinformation in the letters to the editor, and public perception would be that anyone not aware of his two roles would, could look at that and say, "A planning commissioner is, is going against rent stabilization. A planning commissioner is going against the mayor." And they would look at that as more devise, division within the leadership, because the planning commission is the leadership. And so, I am trying to take a, what Judy said, a dispassionate equation of actions and words. And, and, and I think we need to decide how we are going to address someone who serves as, in some ways, a political lobbyist versus a commission, and a commissioner. Because I think the same conversation would be happening if Tom Francis were on the, were on the planning commission. We, do we, do we, those roles need to be separated out. And so, I think that is the real crux of the issue. As for the comments about misogyny, that was directed toward me. And I will admit that I saw that email, that it was shown to me during the campaign. And I, at the time, and I was asked to keep it in confidence because we, it, we didn't want Mark to, to bear the burden of, of that. And at the time, I was, I was really offended. But instead of looking at it as Jeffrey, as this is Jeffrey Starkweather saying this, I, you know, I sort of took it symbolically, and took it that, you know, that it was a representation for every time I, as a female, have been undermined, for every time I've been ignored, passed down for a position. I looked at it as, you know, for every time that my kindness and niceness has been mistook for an invitation to do something uncomfortable. And so, I looked at it symbolically. And I didn't think it was in any way in reference to my character. And regardless of what the intention of the words were, I think a lot of us who are aware of being what it's like to be a, a female in this culture, you know, young, weak, female, you know, weakness is often attributed to characteristics like compassion, like kindness. It's attributed to characteristics that are stereotypically female. And so, even though it was in reference to, as we found out later, in reference to my electability, the word "weak" really doesn't sit well with me, or with a lot of, of, of people who are compassionate toward, toward the experience of, of what it's like to be a woman. And at the same time, I'll say that that email really motivated me. Oh, it motivated me. I got fired up, and knocked on doors. And so, I was able to use that as fuel. And after I got elected, I didn't wanna hold a grudge. I, I, I didn't. I mean, I, I, and so, I reached out to Jeffrey, and said, "Let's get together, and let's meet." And we had a great meeting. And so, I have no ill will toward him. I don't think he's a misogynist. I think we live in a misogynistic culture, and there's still a lot of carryover from, from, you know, from the patriarchy that's starting to break down right now. And, and, you know, he's a product of that. We're all a product of that in some way. I think there were other misogynistic things that happened during the campaign, but I don't wanna bring those into this conversation, because I don't think this conversation is about Jeffrey as a misogynist. And I really want the record to show that I don't think he's a misogynist. I think this conversation is about, who do we want on our planning commission? Our planning commission reflects the body of the council. And so, it's perfectly appropriate, I mean, I'm, I'm looking through all of my, many, many notes from tonight, you know, it's perfectly appropriate for council members and for the mayor to say, "Let's think about this commissioner, or that commissioner." And, and it's perfectly appropriate for us to vote on, on commissioners. Councilmember Whitman has made it no surprise that, that this was going, like, that, that, that you and Jeffrey are not aligned. And...
Point of order.
Yeah, go ahead.
Can we, I, I never got to really finish.
Go, okay, I'm, I'm, okay, go ahead. I'm, I'm finished.
Are you finished? Okay. Thank you. And I really appreciate my council members taking so much time and thought, and also the community members for coming out and speaking on this issue. And it's, in some ways, it seems very complicated, lots of moving parts. On the other hand, I think it's simple, and the question is, what is the best thing for the city? Let's think about the city. Let's take care of the city. And I put this on the agenda because I was responding to the community. We represent the community. I responded to the community to put this on, so that we could talk about it and handle it. And I think the bottom line is, what is the role of a commissioner? And is this a good fit? Certainly, it, this is not a character assassination. It is, what is the best thing for the city? What's the best fit for a commissioner? And just, you know, the commissioners are there to establish a good working relationship with fellow commission members, the city council. Commissioners may not direct staff to initiate major projects without approval from the city council. Individual commission members may not direct staff to initiate any program of study. And, and to quote Phil White, who was on the planning commission for a long time, "There's a certain protocol in the job with respect to relationships with staff. Staff interact with, but do not work for, planning commissioners. It is inappropriate for a planning commissioner to overload staff with communications and requests for staff time." And I think it's also inappropriate for a commissioner to criticize staff, council members, and residents in emails, and send them out to many, 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 many people. I just think that is not the role of a commissioner. And it is, as you said, completely appropriate for the council to make a decision about what is the best thing for the city. So, I think we need to keep coming back to that. And in terms of that, you know, we, young female opponents, I think Leslie Faro had a really good point. If you replace the word "female" with "race" or "sexual orientation," there is no way that we would still be talking about this. And Gloria Steinem calls misogyny "the invisible sport," which I think has really come up tonight. It's, it's hidden, and it's secret, and it comes out in, in ways that we don't always catch, which would be different than if it were a question of race or sexual orientation. So, I think it's really, in respect to the women in our community, the young people in our community, we, we do need to recognize this. And I disagree with Councilmember Rules lumping people together, about, you know, people in our community who, who are brave enough to come here and speak their truth. There were several people here who have never been here before. So, I think it's really not fair to lump those people together and say they're the same people who are here for another issue, because that's just not true. And, and I think, in the big picture, the way that politics have changed in the last several decades, and particularly the last 10 years, and I think social media, and our President Trump had a big part of this, the culture of contempt, there's a focus on motivation and intent. So, when you use the word suspicious about the timing, I think it's really important to just stick to the facts, because when you go into your mind and start conjecturing about where people are coming from, you just don't know, until you ask. So, it, it, once again, I just come back to where I'm coming from in this issue, to take care of the city, to do the best thing for the city, particularly the city staff. We need to nurture them, and take care of them, and make sure that they can function well. So, I think, you know, I've said several statements. And back to the rent stabilization, the Clean Greenhouse Gas Emission Code, which we, as a council majority, passed. One was a 5-0. I've seen emails where Commissioner Starkweather is going against our policies, those two policies, asking staff many, many, many questions to poke holes in the policies that the council, for whom he works and advises, is promoting the opposite policy. So, to me, that just doesn't, once again, seem like a good fit. So, I think that is where I'm gonna end it. And I don't think, I think, if you want peace, and you want harmony, and you want critical thinking, then start here. Use that, do that. And really, realizing that most of us are here doing the best we can most of the time. So, without assigning motivations, intents, suspicions, that is how we can move forward in harmony and, and peace, and get some stuff done. Because as we know, we have a really long list of things to do, so let's just do it.
May I speak?
Yes.
Okay. Mayor Sticks, I feel that you made a fundamental mistake having this hearing, this discussion, without Jeffrey Starkweather present. He planned this vacation so that he wouldn't miss a planning commission meeting. He only had this window of time, because there was no, no planning commission. They meet twice a month. There was no meeting on July the 5th. He typed a long letter... He typed a long letter addressing all the concerns. And I know for a fact that if he had not been on, he typed it on his iPhone, which was running out of juice. He was at some event or on a train. He could hardly, and he did not, I know that if he had been in Ojai, you all would have received his statements. The fact that you didn't get anything from him is verification. He is on vacation. He is, this is far, you know...
But just to confirm, he sent it to you, but that's it? Just to you?
He sent it to the Ojai Valley News.
He sent it to, so it seems like he would be able to send that to us also.
Well, I don't know why he didn't. I didn't even notice who he sent it to.
I'm going to...
Point of order. Just, I'm just, really, point of order. Mayor Sticks, this is the third time that you have interrupted people, so I'm just going to ask you to live with the same rules that you ask us to live with. Thank you.
He may have sent it to other people. You know, I don't know where all it went. I don't know. And so I do have a statement that I want, a closing statement that I want to read. But first, Councilmember Whitman, when you said that you wish that this wouldn't, that you wouldn't, we wouldn't drag your family into this, I feel the same way. When I spoke with Heidi, I was very respectful. I did not mention where the email came from. She was very clear that, I said to her, "Why don't you send me the email with the personal family member?" You know, the names crossed off. And I waited to receive that email, which I was going to show to Jeffrey. I never received it. You know, I am a homeless person, just basically, you know, struggling. I know that these are the people that think I'm not homeless. You come over to my house for three days and watch how I live out of my van and my storage unit. These are the, these people, and who started the rumor that I'm not homeless, is Heidi Whitman, and that's another subject, and I'll be writing about that. Okay? There is still, even though we're members of the council, we still have the right to free speech. I, you know, if you must know, I'm a writer. I copy all your comments. They're going into an article and into a book. Okay? I know the hate that I have been subject to. I feel it every single day. There are people in the audience who stalk me.
Can we focus on the agenda item?
But anyway, I'm sorry that your family name was dragged into this. I still don't know, you know, we have a right to be suspicious. Why was this email released when it was? Why? Why? How did that happen? I still don't know. So here's my closing statement. And I have a different opinion about the role of the commissions. The commissions study and make recommendations to the city council, and therefore should have independence and autonomy in their work. They should not be lackeys, working at the bidding of the entire council, and especially not at the bidding of one or two council members. They should be unequivocally independent. The Planning Commission serves a vital role in our city and the entire Ojai Valley. It is valuable to have some historical memory of what has been discussed and accepted or rejected in the past. Every issue should not be rehashed by a new commission after every election of city council members. The purported reason for considering the removal of Jeffrey Starkweather from the Planning Commission has absolutely nothing to do with his role on the Planning Commission. But I do recognize that possibly it's better that he choose, but that should be up to him. I'm not going to choose which role he should take. Someone has, and the whole, all of this started because someone made pub, you know, it's fine to have a respectful discussion about issues that concern you or other council members and have the Planning Commissioner present. It's not okay to do this when he's not present and to make the rallying cry, you know, it was highlighted in the email. It's a personal, private email in which he described two new unknown, two or three new unknown candidates as weak, young, female opponents. This clearly is meant to describe their financial support. We know that it takes a lot of financial support to run for city council, although, to her credit, Leslie didn't hardly spend any money. So that's all, that's, you know, to her credit.
No, I spent money. I spent my own money.
But there's a limit when you do that. And the word "weak," as other people have pointed out, referred to their electability. It is a fact that two of the candidates have lived, one barely lived in Ojai for a year. They were all new, they were two newcomers, and normally, that's not, you know, you elect people that are known in the community. That's just what someone running the Democratic Club would look at. That's, okay? But it is not, it is in no way a misogynistic statement, nor is it a racial statement. It has no bearing on his work as a commissioner on the Planning Commission. I think, to me, to start out defaming his character, you have successfully spread, in the community, that Jeffrey Starkweather is a misogynist. I think you owe him an apology.
Well, actually, I would disagree with that. I just quoted him, and that's all I did. And I think it's more important, actually...
You quoted him out of context.
Excuse me, Souza. Please don't interrupt me. I quoted him, and it was in context. So I think we're ready for a motion. Would anyone? Yeah, go ahead.
Can I ask, I actually want to ask you. So if, I mean, because one of the big issues is, you know, him serving on the Democratic Club, as the president of the Democratic Club and on the Planning Commission, is there a world in which we could look at, that you would have a conversation with him about choosing one or the other? Or is there any kind of way that we can come to sort of a middle ground, in your opinion?
Well, I mean, choosing would be good, and I'm happy to talk to him, and I have no ill will against him or anyone, and that is the truth. I don't think that he's a good fit to be on our Planning Commission, and for the many reasons that I have listed. So I would like to make a motion to remove Commissioner Starkweather from the Planning Commission. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Discussion, please. Rachel, is there a world in which you would agree that we sit down and we talk to Jeffrey and we involve him in the process of figuring this out? Whether or not it is the decision to go one or the other, or whether or not it is the decision to make clear in all communication how he is, which role he is having? I think, to this point, there is no one on the Planning Commission who believes that he is not doing a good job. I think you have spoken to people, I've spoken to people. So I'm wondering, before I make a substitute motion, is there any room with you to have that discussion with him and together figure out what would be best for the city? I personally do not believe that tossing him off the Planning Commission will be good for this town. It will continue with the divisiveness. People will walk away. I mean, it's not good for the town. So that's my question. I'm wondering if there is, where you are going to fall on this question, and do you have a potential way forward for all of us?
No, that's, thank you for that. I have been, I don't have a way forward. I think this is a really divided, I think this is a divided topic. I can say that, that I've heard in some of my correspondences with people, I've heard that they're, that they experience him as being abusive. These were told to me in confidence. I don't, I don't, you know, I'm really torn. I'm torn because, on a personal level, I think he's a good commissioner. I've gone to the commission meetings, and I've been aware of some of the division that has been happening on social media that he's a part of. And so I don't, I mean, I mean, I'm leaning toward voting to remove him, and at the same time, that is not something, I just, I'm having, I'm leaning toward that, and I...
Do you want to offer?
Go ahead.
Do you want to offer a substitute motion? Councilmember Rule?
I'll offer a substitute motion.
Well, hold on. Thank you. Is it in the realm of possibility that you abstain?
You know, I don't think that's all right.
If I abstain, it's not going anywhere.
Mr. City Attorney, is that all right?
Yes. Every council member has a First Amendment right to vote yes, no, or abstain.
No, but to ask another?
And yeah, council members can ask, and council members can refuse to answer.
Okay. All right. So we have a substitute motion?
Yeah. My substitute motion is, and I meant to talk about this, I talked, you know, I'm sure I talked too long. But this issue started in part because I was concerned that our Planning Commission was composed of people primarily not appointed by the city council, that is currently sitting here. But what I learned in talking to various commissioners is that there, prior to my ever making the suggestion that I should be able to select, there was a round of selections made by the prior city council. And there was a lot of concern that that wasn't handled well. And it had very little to do with the functioning of the commissions, and had a lot to do with, you know, politics and arbitrariness. So with that in mind, I want to spend time talking to our commissions about the proper selection process. And so my substitute motion is that we thank Jeffrey Starkweather for his service, but let him step down, and that we work with the commissions on these rules, because there's been a lot of dissatisfaction, from what I can see, and there's a lot of confusion. But one thing that has always been present is that the city council can decide to remove a commissioner if they think that's in their best interest, and so that's my motion.
Okay. Is there a second?
I would second it.
Okay. All right. Roll call on that, please.
Yes, Mayor.
I'm sorry, I need to make discussion. I could not be more disappointed in this council. I literally could not be disappointed.
Okay, let's call the vote, please.
But I have another point to make. What happens when we throw Jeffrey Starkweather off of the Planning Commission is that he becomes, what HCD is going to see, and which has been said here, is that we have thrown off a Planning Commissioner who supports affordable housing when we are in the middle of discussing with them whether or not we are substantially compliant. And they will see this, and that is one of the problems, where city council throws off Planning Commissioners who support affordable housing. It is a standard process that city councils do, and I don't know what HCD is going to say, but I know we're in the middle of negotiations with them to get a substantially compliant housing, and they will see this as the city council throwing off a Planning Commission who supports affordable housing. So I'm just, you know...
If I could, this is, this is, this is the, I think you're drawing, you're presenting a reason why this matters. Because if we have someone who's very vocal and opinionated about these subjects, and, you know, honestly, Jeffrey is a great, amazing community volunteer. He is involved in a lot of different things. He wears a lot of hats. But the retaliation that you're talking about is actually one of the reasons why, to me, it feels like it's, like, the conflict of interest is too great for us to move forward. And so, and so I think, you know, I would hope that there wouldn't be retaliation or revenge or anything like that. When we're trying to make policy, we're trying to make a policy decision, we're trying to make a commissioner decision, I want to take it way outside of the politics of this and really keep it within that, you know, that dispassionate equation that we're talking about.
As you see best fit. Roll call, please.
Yes. On the substitute motion, Mayor Proton Francina.
No.
Councilmember Lang.
Yes.
Councilmember Whitman.
Yes.
Councilmember Sticks.
Yes.
Sorry, Mayor Sticks.
Yes.
Councilmember Rule.
No.
Okay. All right. Well, thank you very much. We will postpone the other two items, and let's move on to city, to council member reports. Can we have quiet, please? We're still having a meeting.
Totally unassailable. Just unbelievable.
Councilmember reports?
Absolute disgrace.
Well, we had a great Fourth of July parade. It was absolutely fantastic. So thank you to everyone who helped organize it and were involved. Beautiful floats, beautiful people, lots of great community spirit, so very exciting. And we are excited to talk about the paving next time. Sorry, James, you couldn't be there. And I'd also like to thank James for really getting that paving going. And also, I know it's late in the evening, but I just have to say, James, you're incredible. So... The first time James and I ever met, after the first time I was elected, we sat, it was during COVID. We'd never met in person. We sat down. I said, "Nice to meet you, James." And he said, "Well, you know, when there's an emergency, you and I are in charge." I'm like, "Cool. Great." And of course, I woke up at 2:00 in the morning thinking, "I've never met this guy, and now we're in charge." And after a couple of weeks of getting to know you, it became so clear what great hands that Ojai was in, and it's just been a real honor and a pleasure to work with you and get to know you. And so just thank you, thank you, thank you. And I know because you've got horses and pigs you can't go for. Okay, any other council member reports? No? City manager report? Last one, James.
Yeah.
Say whatever you want.
I don't have much. We had scheduled this year's paving project to start around this week, and I think we just found out that it's postponed to next week. And so people should see paving start next week for this year's project. And then that will tie in nicely, because then we'll be ready to talk about the next five-year plan. So that'll, my recommendation will be that that be on the next agenda with the pending agenda item that we didn't get to, and then we'll go from there. And I think, as much as I'm trying not to give a little speech, I won't. I think Andy Gilman actually paraphrased pretty well what I thought my job was in Ojai, which was to not let it get screwed up. And I think I recommend everybody continue forward with that thought process. I think the positive way that I was going to try to say it is, Ojai is very special. We heard today from a lot of the speakers, the list of reasons why, and there's a thousand more reasons why it's special. And I tell, I'm telling the staff as I'm leaving, you know, it's hard sometimes to know what the right thing to do is, but when you're in doubt, ask yourself, are you doing what's best for the Ojai community? And I think if everybody does that, we'll be in good hands. And I think if everybody does that, we'll be in good hands. So I would encourage the staff, the community, the council, to just keep that in mind moving forward. And thank you for the opportunity to serve the community.
Thank you so much, James. And just one other thing, the community owes you a huge thank you for getting us through COVID so well. James did everything, wore every hat and worked nonstop. And who knew you'd have to become a, you know, medical expert? Anybody else?
Yeah, I'll say, I really appreciate the time you've spent with us, James. I felt like I have had as good of counsel from you on addressing these issues and, you know, very thoughtful in every way that you've looked at things. And I know you've always had the best interests of the community in mind. And I have loved working with you. And I feel really bad that you're leaving, and I feel really good that you've been recognized for your talents and are making a big career move up.
Thank you.
Yeah, and, and I've, I've just wanted to second that. I, we're really going to miss you. And, you know, I had the chance to listen to a presentation about what's happening in Port Wainimi, and there's some really great things. It's, it's really a community that seems to be growing and functioning really well. And I serve on boards with other council members there. And so I think they're very lucky to have you. And thank you for all of your service.
Thank you.
Yes, the Port Wainimi council member, I know she's very happy she's getting a city manager that wasn't fired.
Getting rarer and rarer.
And I, I think you're going to enjoy, I think you're going to enjoy the short meetings there. They're going to love you, and you'll enjoy, you know, a different atmosphere.
Thank you.
Thank you for everything.
Thank you.
I'm just going to say a final word. Thank you for the 10:30 meetings on Monday morning. I learned a heck of a lot, both about how to maneuver in City Hall and also about the issues. You're always really, really forthcoming and clear, the clarity around what the issues were. But mostly, the, the idea of perspective, how you actually approach this and how you think about it, was invaluable to me for the, you know, the weeks that we met, you know. So thank you very much for that, and I will, I will try to bring that forward as, as we go forward. Yeah.
Is there a party? A going-away party?
Right now, right? All right. Well, thank you all for being here. Have a good evening. We're adjourned.